You're serious? You're serious? Oh my god. You... What the fuck? Okay, okay, LD, I see. I see how it is. Uh... I'm motivated today. I post that shit. And post that shit. Hello DragonCrazz, hello DavidMeb... Hello Ruby! And hello LD. How are you all doing on this Thursday? Uh... Hello, where at you? What the fuck is wrong with my chat? Why are you all the way back there? Or back here? Uh, wait. Let me check something. Okay, that one is in the right place. Hmm, let's start trying not to fall asleep. Yeah, that's a fight eh? You need to move the chat, we know. Wait, I'm looking that way. Wait, what am I looking?
As the Emperor, as my witness, I was the first one here, and claim victory, and defeated the arrival of Siri Butt.
That is true. I'm trying to do better with like warning people that the stream is starting, because I want, you know, I don't want you to have to find me. Or maybe if you have like the, um... I said that crap last night, so it's made it even worse. Yeah, yeah, dear lord. Uh... Be right back, I just need to put, turn the light on, because I want to see shit. Because the night is starting to fall, and it's also getting cloudy. So, visibility is, uh, is very bad. Be right back. And I am glad that this time I did not forget to turn my, uh, microphone off. I did not forget to turn my microphone off before stream, because I was thinking something, and I don't think I'm nearly ready for that. So... I mean, I don't know what to think, so... Eh... Trying though. Um... So yeah! I guess, is that, dude, chat placement? Is it a baseball bat in your head? It's a club, just technically... Uh... Wait, no, not that one. This one. It's a club. Uh... Instead of trying to... The difference between a baseball bat and a club is that technically, baseball bats are used to play sports, clubs are used to cave in skulls. That's the difference. The club is used to kill shit. Baseball bats are used to do omelets. That's the difference. It's pretty much like, baseball bats as the, I guess, a nice version? I don't know what to say. I guess, I... Took the sand dune off the new tattoo. What's a sand dune? Oh, is it the, um, fake skin layer? Uh, new tattoos since the ink sacs were dry, and it is itchy. Yeah. My brother told me the same, about when he got his tattoo like years ago, like the itch is crazy. I think the last time he said like something as itchy was when he broke his arm and he had like, you know, a cast, and the cast was killing him. He had to wear a cast, um, like a cast, a cast, over his arm multiple times. Because he broke his arm a bunch. He's a dumbass. Because he's a... Uh, let me quickly do the auto channel, the auto channel thing, and then we can, uh, move on, to go back to the grind. I want to finish the character path, I want to finish the... Uh, too much you can use each for the other's purpose, I think. The club violates, I think, I mean... I mean, that is true. I mean, it depends on the club. They come in all shapes and sizes, I mean, all shapes, all sizes, not very much all shapes. I should at least see you in my stream chat tomorrow, this is, uh... Oh yes, your birthday, stream! I almost don't want to be there, just because my brain goes like, mm, don't like getting older, mm, because I am a contrarian. But I will, I will. If I'm awake. Depends when you start. Probably only enough for me to be awake. Probably only enough for me to do... Uh, to do the death? Probably. Uh, this... Then... Because I still need to post on, because I wanted to be on time. Somewhat, when I said that I would start the stream, I wanted to be on time. It's pretty much to keep myself also in check, it's like, if I write it down, then I... It's more like a commitment. I know it's like, it's like a little psychological trick. Um, self-promo there. On the fix. Uh, on the art mom. Because I don't know, no, I should not say that. It's her stuff. I should not, it's her stuff and I don't want to say something, yeah, no, no. I'm very proud of the foxies if that happens. I mean, she's been grinding away like a maniac, so she deserves all of it. All the success. Grinding is great. Uh... All good, I'm doing 10 AM, 10 AM, yeah. Supposed to... Hello Dakka. Uh... Hey Beaver. Hello. No, because most of you were red. Most of them were red, like both, um, uh, Ruby and Yusa was like, "Am I reading twice the same name?", and then everyone was like, "No, it is somewhere else." Okay, hello gentlemen. Uh, by the way, uh, I'm going to soon, because I'm starting to lose my shit about my clips. You will soon be required... And paid. Because I'm getting pissed off at looking at them every time. And I try to edit them, but I'm like, mm, I am dogshit. So... Who do I see? Yes, the brain is not happy. Uh... And it's the senior. I may have, I may have done a bit of a, some... Some cheeky and supportive gremlin-ing may have happened. Dakka is good, more Dakka is better, that is true. What went on to blow the bullet? Uh, so what, what was I doing? There's something I wanted to, hmm... Hmm... Did I forget something? Oh yeah! Did finish the medias. Um... Should I do that here? Probably, maybe? I don't know. Uh, but... Where? Uh... Hey, of course, as soon as I start streaming, of course. Um... Of course, as soon as I start streaming, I start to yawn, obviously. Uh... This is how it goes. I don't know. When I go to repo, so you do that, eh, because that goes with... Uh, ba 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 ba, then promoting here, because... Good community. Uh, and I cannot really comment, comment on anything, because it is grinding. Like, I literally, I'm grinding my ass off during this game. It was like, I am kind of... Ouch. It's so... I mean, I am grinding my ass, so, what the fuck? Oh my god. Okay. Uh, Viva Viva, no, don't say you're grinding your... Dakka, you're the only one who thought like this. That's entirely you, 200%, no, 500%. You know what? Here you go. That's what you deserve. That's what you deserve. You're going to get that. You're gonna get the ultimate. You're the first to say it. You was the same first, first... You're the first to fucking say it. Bro, you can't complain! You can't fucking complain after you say that shit! You literally the one who's like, "Hey, here comes the biggest target on my face!" Seriously. That's what you get. That's what you fucking get. I'm going to literally create a new source. Image. I don't need to name it, Dakka Disappointment. I'm literally updating, I'm literally updating my own stuff. This is the Dakka Disappointment. There you go.
It is said Cor Farren and Erebus were advised by Darker.
Oh my god, that's some heavy sand, though. This is what you get. Half the guy is literally going like, "I just said cursed shit, I don't want any of the consequences." And I'm like, "Yes, yes you do, yes you need to." This is what you get. I literally name, I literally name the picture source Dakka Disappointment. I need to keep it. I didn't. I literally, I literally picked it up. I literally didn't. I had to, I had to find it, and I made it to redeem Dakka Disappointment? I mean, I could. But I... So basically, dogshit, get it? Yes. It... This is the rule of the universe. I know, I was there. I did. And the universe said, it, um... I said grinding my ass away. I said grinding my ass away. I did what I said, which is working. Don't act like you have no fucking brain cells. And then you said, "Oh, don't talk about grinding your ass, baby, baby." You're the one who made it sus. Don't try to be, you said, "You made it fucking sus."
The Codex Astartes doesn't support this action, but I'm looking forward to it.
I am not sus at all. I have been forced... And manipulated by my community. I am not sus at all. The changing, the guy, what? Who beats his ass? There was someone who took code to changing and literally like, literally turned him into a fucking pulp, by punching him repeatedly. Who was it? No! There isn't. The chat is sus, not me. Susi Dakka, that is true. You smell like a darker Aeon Dragger. What the fuck are you raving? I don't have any feelings. What is this thing you say, feelings? They don't exist, they're a lie created by big government. To turn the frogs gay. There we go. It's a doubtless statement. Don't care anymore. I wasted so much time trying to find some Final Fantasy photos. Oh, damn it! Is my Benzel could no be... No be there and rotate each other with... They know! Okay, I'm going to give you a clear... Oh, you found them? That's good. Very frustrating. If anyone is stupid enough to think that me and Dakka hate each other, like purely simply, we cannot help you. He's my core game designer on this shit. You think I would spend that much time with, 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 with him? You...
Moon and star, I have seen worse on here.
Don't care anymore. I is waiting now. Oh, of course, Twitch. Uh... Should I remove all the ads? Yeah, but then there's no, I don't, can I? Or do I need, I think I need to be partner. Oh no, ad break is always great. It's always at the, at the perfect time. Another day, another PlayStation event with no Bloodborne. It will never happen! It will never happen! It will never happen! It's not a dream, you are killing yourself! They literally created a whole last new game on the Wii, just to not do Bloodborne on PlayStation. Hello. Hello. Yeah, Dakka's here.
I'm getting, uh, an uncomfortable walk outside during, uh, during work hours.
Need to make his volume higher.
Hello. Hello.
You're still loading no matter what I do.
Oh well. But yeah, uh-huh. Outside during my normal work hours to go down, there is a dog sports event happening here in town.
Uh...
Not 200 feet away from me.
Eh, where?
Uh, so I can especially make Eldritch and Ruby very jealous of the fact I get to go hang out with random puffers all over town.
Nothing around me. You know, I don't think you understand how LD works. LD will say, "Oh, nice", and that's it.
Yeah.
Now, Ruby is raging.
Ah, all these puffers, Ruby.
No, I, I, I was... I was a little shit, I was a little shit with LD and she still laughed at it.
Hmm.
It was great.
Right now, they're doing, uh, they're doing doggy long jump, where they have them, uh, jump off a dock into an artificial pond, just to see how far they can jump. So yes, you get, you get, you get puppy jumps. There's a lot of good puppies.
Yeah, right? They're really hard to walk around.
Oh, a dog adoption event.
You can barely take care of the dog you already have.
Yeah. Exactly. Not, my apartment's too darn small for a dog.
Yeah.
But a grand and intoxicating innocence.
Oh my god.
Sorry, my brain's a bit of a scramble dig today. What are we working on?
Extra redneck is blocked by auto mode?
Redneck is not a sloth.
I said that is a fact, because I had to permit the word "redneck".
Oh my god, no, that's absolute, no. No, that's very silly.
Because Virtue said, "Gonna be honest, I love that Dakka's image is a redneck orc, like..." More like hillbilly.
Nah, no, I've never spent, I've not spent nearly enough time in the south or out in the country.
No, what I'm saying, that your model, your, your, like your PNG, like your PNG yourself.
Oh, no, it's Dale, it's Dale Gribble. He was just mentally insane.
Yeah, but is he not from a shoko like King of the Hills?
It is King of the Hill, it's more, it's not so much redneck.
Yeah, it's more like hillbilly.
No, um, well, no, no, because Dale Gribble is absolutely like a full-on conspiracy theorist.
I mean, like a hillbilly.
That... Yeah. Hold on, I'm gonna...
And I'd get, I'd get that... I'd get that beasting look, that... Oh my god.
There we go, I'm, I'm currently streaming. The dog, dog.
Why? I can't, I can't see it. I'm streaming!
No, well, I'll take... Yeah, I'll take a picture for the chat.
I'm streaming! It's like, what do you, what do I have to do? I'm already on two screen, and every time I like, "I wish I got the third screen to manage more shit", and I don't.
Wait, did I get that mid-jump? Did I get, did I get that mid-jump?
The deep end so cold, take it away, take it away.
Oh my god, yes, I got the, I got a picture of the dog mid-jump into the water.
But I can't, but I'd have to leave, just nothing else to give, take it away, take it away.
Alright. I'm gonna be nice and I'll send Ruby the picture. I won't torment her.
Uh, LD, Dakka wanted to make you, uh, jealous at the fact that she's, that there's a dog competition. There's too much noise behind you.
Yeah, let me mute myself. Hold on, fuck christ.
Yep, definitely Ruby, definitely from the famous dating game Final Fantasy XIV. The famous dating, yeah, a dog competition, yeah, a dog sport competition where he is. And he wanted to make you jealous that he was like hanging out, he wanted to make you jealous that he's hanging out with a bunch of puffers. But I'm like, I literally, I literally... Uh, and I literally, and I literally told him like, "I, I don't think..." I literally don't, I literally like, tell him like, "I don't think you know LD works", and she would say, "Nice for you", and that's it. That's why I'm like... I literally, I said like, "I don't think she'd be jealous, I just said she'd be like happy for you", so, like... And you're unmuted now, and he's muted now. Eh... Yeah, you guys, yeah, I'm starting to know you! For the amount of hours we hang out. I need to know you think. And it, it's just like...
There we go, it should be a bit more quiet. Yeah, there's so many good puffers down here. There's so many good puffers down there. I, uh, in reality, I wish y'all could be here just to hang out with the dogs.
It's alright, I mean, depends. Oh, it's sad. Have to live, just to give, take it away, not anymore. Hmm, I need to finish that. I did all the actives. No, I didn't do all the actives. What am I saying? Some of them I left. The symbiotic left from plant. Um, is it bad if, that I ship my Lalafell warrior of light with, who the fuck is Creel? I, I don't play Final Fantasy XIV, so I have no idea.
No, this is a unique type of brain damage that you'd need, uh, mage to interpret.
Not nary being on TikTok at work. Am I supposed to be surprised? Hell no, it isn't. What? Who the fuck is Creel? Oh, so it's another Lalafell? In both Lalafell, I think. Maybe? So, I guess small people in love? Eh... Heads! Who cares about the shorties? Heads! I sure don't, they give me back pain. And I have to look down at them and be like, "Why are you short?" Uh... I mean, yes, they are. You see them second. Dude, when I look around, I don't see them first. I literally, do you know how tall I am if I look straight ahead and I look, I literally look above their heads? Of course, secondary, I see them, I have to literally look down to, to, to witness them. And you have to actively do another effort to look down. They're short! In the world, if I'm those, they're short. Then you have to bend down, you have to say hello to 20 family members that are like shorter than you, and at the end you're like, "I need to sit down, my back hurts." Eh... Just cause I say hello the French way when most of them is like, because it's family, so... Yo. And so, yeah. And no comment on that. Everyone is shocked by to me, commit mountain trend! There we go. It's my fault people are short and I'm tall. That's the way it goes. Door frames hurt. I will pat all of your, all of your heads. What heads? Only have one head. Good. I like seeing friends happy. And if I can do it that easy, because I tried to do the Gollum voice, and literally the Gollum voice like hurts my, like hurts my throat, you know, it would hurt my vocal cords. So I could not do it, and I mean, it's the same with Andy Serkis, so I'm not surprised, because he literally had like a mix of like tea... He literally had a special like blend of like a mix of, I think, tea, like orange juice, like citrus juice, honey, like some, like different, like literally to try to soothe his like vocal cords after doing shoots, talking as, talking as Gollum. It literally hurt him. Which is not surprising, I mean, have you heard the motherfucker? That's, that's a weird ass voice. I mean, it's supposed to be weird ass, it's literally the weird ass, the weir- the most weird. I know, every time I think about it, it's like Rings of Power managed to make Tom Bombadil sad. Tom motherfucking Bombadil. I'm like, who is, why? I mean, yes, there is melancholy in some of the themes of Tom Bombadil, but not the guy himself. I mean, it was not Tom Bombadil, it was a fucking lapper. Good! They deserve it, they did a shit job. Okay, dude, they're too short for me to headpad. They're literally too short for me to headpad, okay. Height of a Lalafell. What? Five feet? Yeah, to 10. You mean, the one when Sauron is an incel? Sauron, an incel. I Galadriel is a fucking sociopath. Dude, was so much of an incel that it changed, it literally changed a geographic region. That's... That was truly right. Yeah, they're too fucking short. They're too fucking short. They need a stepping stool. They need to, um, the entire thing makes no sense. I don't get it, it's like, what kind of branded writer that gives a shit, because my opinion is they don't give a shit, they really don't. And so, that's why the entire stick of literally putting a sword, okay. The entire tower, bridge, fortifications and all of that was built by elves. The dam was built by elves. And you have to use a Mordor sword with a Mordor sword slot that has been made for that Mordor sword to be put into the slot to collapse a dam that was built by elves that were enemies of Mordor. What does that do? Um, destroys the bridge, destroy like the wall and the dam for some reason, and also put a lot of water into Mordor to make a volcano explode. That will make Mordor, Mordor again. For some reason. Uh... Makes no sense. Also... The settlement is in the Southlands, the Southlands is a mix of both Aradrim and the Minorian, which means they could have gotten away with making the entire town look, um, African or Middle Eastern, mostly Middle Eastern. They could have made the entire town look Middle Eastern. But they still chose to put like white dudes and black dudes and Asian dudes to do like the diversity thing. Which makes no sense, because that's not all the world of Tolkien works, it's in the south, in the south you have what, the people of the, the Southrants. The Southrants are dark-skinned, dark hair. Everyone is a Southlander at heart, yeah, say, say that when, when, uh, after the Third War, during the Fourth Age, um, uh, trying to put music on the TV is hard, I just, I just wanna have beef, stream and music. Dun 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 dun, and, you know, it is just... You know, it's, I don't get... They literally had everything written down. They had everything written down, if they did the plot, if they did the plot with the four, with the Blue Wizards, they would have needed one less money, or they could have put their money into better investments about the show. Imagine, imagine under pressure playing when Beva is going to, under pressure playing, what? Oh, the song Under Pressure? Uh, I can actually get it. Gone away, I do, I, I cut it away, I love you, I love you. Oh, it's Queen, it's a Queen David, David Bowie, huh? Sorry, I, I don't listen much to this kind of music, I mean, I know it, I know the bands, of course, it's a band. David Bowie and I know Queen. Uh... Heck yeah! Okay, how the fuck do I do that? Oh, I could finish the LD class, but that's not a wolf, but then he won't bug me. Did I finish it? I didn't even finish it. Should I? Should I? Hmm... Yeah, but then it's still looking in my brain. I said I made a mistake today, I made a terrible mistake. Fine, do what you want, I do, I don't know, eh, I, I have no idea. So that I... Cleaning so deeply, I'm taking my workshop apart to clean, oh my god. I would never do that, I hate cleaning, I hate cleaning. Um, how much should I do cleaning Lady Coast? I don't know. Uh, blah 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 blah, yeah, I have no clue, at least on the, it's just to juggle, juggle like brain cell, because I don't fucking know, and I'm almost done with that one. Uh, that one should be what? Should I be an ass? Should I take inspiration in, with, uh, upon the LD itself? Should I? Should I do a subtle, a subtle jab? I mean, not really a jab, it's more like a mechanic that is somewhat of a hidden jab. What? No, no, nothing, I said nothing. Nothing is happening. No, no, you were not mentioned at all. Uh, oh, good, I hit, I hit it with a shoulder, that's great. Yes, Dakar, that is a joke. Thank you for explaining the joke. Um, what's body part? Uh, the mask has to be the one. Uh, the mask has to be the one you can wear. Oh my god, I could be so morbid about it. Okay, I could be morbid about it. No, she's talking about me! Yes, be morbid, I know you would like it. It's just, it's, it's just too funny, because it's literally right down your alley. Oh, no, she's not, I don't think she's a sus, yes. I mean, you're the one who literally heard, heard thing before. You're the one who did. That's very much beef vibes. Ooh. I mean, that is true, that your intrusive, your intrusive thoughts, Dakar, very sauce, that is true. Uh, dude, it's rare that I have someone on my side in my chat, I, I deleted this. Because Joe plays both sides. So, hmm, mask one, of course, um... So, oh my god, they're literally ganging up on Dakar now. Wait, is Dakar getting second-hand streamer experience? Dakar is literally getting the second-hand streamer experience. Wah! Everybody out, if I fall, I will... And he has escalation. I was waiting for this. Uh, so... Upon, I need to move that shit so that's no longer, yeah, but if I move it too much in front of, fucking stand up, you piece of shit! You're, okay, okay, that's a problem. If I fall, again, I need to be far more forward, because it's starting to annoy me. Oh, uh, well, okay, if I put it there, I need to be like, "Brrr, look down!", okay, or maybe look up, I don't know, or maybe like that, maybe like that, so I can actually see what I'm writing. Thing is cold, oh, cold thingies? Uh... Upon, uh, your... Wait, which Eldritch? That's why I say LD and Eldritch, because now I know which one is... I say gentleman. Both of them? Yeah, it's probably that LD doesn't really give a shit. LD really doesn't give a shit about much, so... If I fall, I will... Um, upon your exact demise, you, you can instead... Fuck you all, everybody out, I own... Oh, no. I'm saying I care to, to have cold thingies. My dice dodged that still, uh, I don't, my, hmm... I am anemic. You're anemic? I didn't do that. Ah. That probably explains when you're always feeling tired, if you're anemic. I curse you with this Dakar, oh no. Oh no, the end, I need to consume so much iron, yeah, because if you're anemic, you need like more, much more like blood. Most, they are? Dude, I'm learning about women, but not the way people think. I don't know what to, wait, that fucking sucks, because if you bleed, if you bleed like once a month and you're anemic, why such a debuff? That's cruel. Yeah, there's already a debuff, you know? Oh, I was right, kinda. Oh, no. Apples, I mean, that's why you, that's why eating apples is a great choice, actually, on your hand, because apples are rich in iron. I, iron-rich, if I want to say it in a proper English way. Uh, upon your exact demise, you can instead of, um... Of, eh, ooh, ee. Just have on Magneto. Menorah, yeah? Oh my fucking god. I, I'm sorry to say, but I'm very glad I was born a man. I am glad in many ways that I was, I mean, there's a lot of shit that men also have to go through, like no one giving a shit about if you die or not. I mean, the only one giving, like, society not giving a shit about like your well-being? Is female issues success, I mean, yeah, you're non-binary? I guess I never really asked, so I should not be surprised, because I never really asked. Because I don't really care, I mean, it's just like, you're you. I mean, you're you, so, it's, it's Ruby, friend, the rest don't really matter to me. I reach no heights, I am beyond, I am beyond asses, no, I am a chick. I have become the sorrow chick grindset. What does that mean? One chick for, one chick to rule them all? And in shadow mend them? I do wish one day... If I do wish to one day reach no heights, I mean, you already do. That was a fucking freebie, that was a freebie, oh my god! I mean, I also have an ass, and I also have heights. So, I guess I win, I don't know. I mean, in that department, I win. Is this a win? I don't know. I don't really... I mean, if you're a dude, society will never care about you, we're meant to be sacrificed. Why do you think men literally look around and are like, "Time to take shit for myself"? Because if you don't, uh, no one will give a shit, no one will ever give a shit. It's been like eight thousand years of recorded history, with the entire recorded history, if, if a man is weak, kill him. So I... You know, and I'm not saying like one is better than the other, because that's stupid, I'm just saying, different challenges, different challenges in life. We have our own battles, and as a man, the battle is everyone else, is everyone else. What should I listen to? You know what, I'm going to go more metal today. Is this, is, I, I don't do RP future, features, what do you call RP fu, what do, what? Have we decided on something? Did we decide on something? I don't fucking remember. I should have wrote it down, I should have wrote it down so we don't have this fucking discussion again. Oh my god, I need to literally go to game. I know it's an active. I don't do RP, I do active and passive, that's the way I do, active, passive, active, passive, active, passive, I don't know what RP means. Yeah, so, so passive. I mean, when I say, whatever. Uh, I don't know, whatever. No, it's not a passive, it's on the active slot, because I used this thing, I used this thing correctly, which is active, passive, active, passive, active, passive, active, passive. That's an active. I haven't dealt most of the passives yet, because I need to think about that. So now, time for abuse, more abuse. Uh, not really. Not really in our setting, not, not really. It depends, both are pretty awesome, I've got to say, like, both are interesting. Uh, but can you start? Okay, nah, it's... Dude, that's not a fair comparison, a twelve passive is all... Dude, that's not a fair comparison. A 12 passive is already better on the build-up. But a lot of the passive we make are actually setups, I mean, they're setting ups, or like... They're literally like, a lot of the passives actually are meant to be synergies with the active. So one without the other, that's why I need to pick and choose. I can see what line you are, because it is on... Uh, no, you can't. It's eight active. No, you can't, so no. Because I can't see, yeah, I can't see. Okay, I see, I didn't see the can't. I see, I can see. Okay, because there was no apostrophe, because you're on the phone. Um, oh yeah. Yeah, you can't, I know. But if you know one thing, I will always, when I do some shit, do mostly like active-passive, active-passive, like these spell-active. So things that require an action. I mean, yeah. Of course it's Skyrim, of course you're gonna be like, "Hey, dick first in the fight." I haven't cleaned up my work desk in ages, you. I mean, that's what happens when you clean stuff. Hmm... My desk doesn't have any Kuthos, how many statues does that make? How many Kuthos are on your desk, out of curiosity? The out-of-combat roleplay passive are one at level two, level five, and level eight. I don't know! Was it decided? Where? It's not written every, anywhere. It's not written anywhere. Where? It's... Not written anywhere. Where? That's not how I do it. I never did it that way. I never did it that way. I just do active-passive, 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 that's it! And sometimes roleplay, instead of a passive. It depends where I make the class. I never... I never did that, that formalized. I guess it end up that way? I mean, I don't have at least three roleplay. Why do you count as roleplay? I guess we do have that? I don't know. I'm failure! I can't take it, I'm gonna be connected every night, I'm failing! This... Okay, open, okay. Okay, finally go back to that shit. Whatever, I do it right! I am right, don't care! If it works, it fucking works! Upon your exact demise, you can instead of, how do I name it? Uh... Uh... Okay. Instead of summoning... You can... Wait, you already had like objectify? Should I? No, that's too much. Stolen Grace is better. Yeah, stolen Grace is more vague. Summoning, how do you write summoning? Is it two N? No, there's only one N, right? Uh, you can, um... Turn their, uh, because it's mostly like a melee kind of focus class. Okay, to turn their remaining... Essence into an item. The level eight sweardrill is exactly the kind of thing I was talking about. Okay, I guess. It's just that I tend to put, um, I tend to put the skill ones early on, because then it becomes, because then you can choose how, I don't know, it just... I guess, I guess, beh... Let it out! Let go to hell! Let go! Use, where? I run! It's all, it's too much love! Someone else, you could just help! And it's so sad! Uh, I'm very bad at going high. With my voice, I am terrible at this. Mostly because my voice is not really that high. And then, dan, 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 yeah. I guess no one really gives a shit. I mean, it seems that way, maybe I lost, maybe I lost the... I don't know. Is it time I stream? I don't know. No, because I can't skip Thursdays, because it's gonna be a campaign on Thursdays. No, because I'm trying to, is it a couple of bad weeks? When it comes to viewer attendance? It seems I have, I got, I got no one. Like, it seems I literally got no one. And the second day in a row. So is Thursday no good? I don't know. I don't know, that's weird. Yeah, I know, but it kind of sucks, because it's like... And you know it is. I know, but it just, I just, I just wish, I mean... You know it is, I just wish there was more, you know, putting effort into that shit. Putting effort into that shit, so it's, it's... I'm just going to be fucking honest, it's annoying. It's frustrating, and again, I'm, I'm not, it's not... Ah... Yeah, I don't want... Because I don't want... I don't want it to sound like arrogant or something, it's just... You know, wishing. To just for a... No, it's just wishing for, you know... And, because... Whatever. And again, I'm not feeling... And again, I, I, I no longer feel sad about it, it's mostly like... I mean, I know, I'm going to try, um, I'm going to try. I need to actually, I need to actually remember what Eldritch codes for editing clips. Because I'm just going to blast shit. To be entirely honest, that's just going to be what I'm going to fucking do. I need to blast shit out, and I get to see if it works or not. Because apparently you need to like occupy more spaces. And I'm like, "Yeah, but I don't want to..." "Yeah, but I, I don't wanna, I..." Uh, again, Erebus, can you DM me your, your fiver? Uh, can you DM me your fiver, because I want to solve that shit? And still I still have money, I'm going to, yeah, use it! Hahaha! I'm just going to use Matrix, Matrix tools and blast it everywhere in one go. Because I have like a hundred plus clips sitting around. So depending, depending on, haha! Depending on insane Erebus wants to be about it. That could be a very long-lasting, long-lasting, uh, payment. Then zone! Let it out, let it out! Uh, yes, star, star... Uh, how many clips do I have? I'm just going to look at my fucking clips, because I don't remember. Yes, you are with... It's been well... How many? No, I want all of them. All time. Yeah. Can I just have all of them? Oh my god! I have, I have 121 clips! Good news, Zenitor is still interested in my campaign, so I will be helping him with character tomorrow. Also, I made a new friend. On MateStevr, wants to, to draw art for us. I did tell her, we had a certain standard for any of us, I mean... There's still a lot of clips. I mean, yeah. That's why I'm like, "Hey, Erebus won't want a job!" Hahaha! I have 121 clips! Erebus, how do you feel about it? Hey, gentlemen, how do you feel about that? Want to be paid? Hahaha! Because I don't want to do it, because it sucks. I hate editing. I know as a streamer it's terrible. And I should be like, "Oh, I should learn to love it." But I'm like, "I have money!" Uh, Zenit is still interested in my campaign, so I'll be helping him with character tomorrow, oh yeah. Also, I made a new friend on MateStevr, wants to draw art for us, okay? Okay, first... I know, but I want to, uh, I know! But I, but I, I don't wanna, so I'm not gonna. I have no intent of being a huge streamer lol, I just want to chill, smart. I mean, you know the beaver way. The beaver way is go home of go home, go home of, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. Go big or go home. I'm failing. Uh, go big or go home is the beaver way. Mostly because I want the Tabo Tabaji to succeed. I started this entire shit just for the Tabo Tabaji. It became more. Because I met you and I met other people and... Because I met you and other people, it's just different objectives, right? Na-na-na-na-na-na-na-na, du-du-du-du-du. And honestly, I just... If I could, I would... It sounds like I'm a piece of shit for doing this, but... I was thinking about something like, because you can have like a VIP chat, and I wonder if I can just put my friends on the VIP chat? And just have two chats, you, like the friendos, and the rest of the chat? Because the rest of the chat will do too much for me, because I can be a big streamer. But I wonder, can they see the VIP chat? I think you could see the VIP chat on stream, right? Just got a scam text from the Department of Motor Vehicles. Oh yeah. A Dakka? Dakka question? Dakka, Dakka, Dakka. Question, question, question. Mopping, it is hard. Mopping takes, took effort. Uh, because it's, uh, you know, moving a, something full of water around. And also lifting. Oh, Dakka is getting angry. You know how many words I had to, I had to add to auto mode for you, for you to put that? I had to literally... Uh, "Go fuck yourself, you stupid fucking, you stupid fucking", it literally all had to be like admitted for you to go through. One thing, the whole room at once, I'm doing one section at a time, so I ju- I just clean as the entry and now I'm moving. Okay, Dakka! Question? Uh, the mage friend, does he want to be paid? Do they want to be paid, or is it, or is it fun art? Because that's the big difference. Because my standards might be fun art, to be honest, that's the difference. Because if, because I am going to be hyper selective when it comes to art, I pay for, because of course. Oh! When Shane I play repo. You want to play repo? Ah, okay. I sat down and I have cat paralysis now, and then she was never heard of again. But I just want to start for new thing, okay, just tell me. Just tell me. That's all it is? Just fucking tell me? And everything will be fine? Yeah, just catch up with your backlog and then, uh, go around to, go around to me again. Not gonna lie, if, um... If I'm going to commission you, it's probably going to be for bodacious ladies. That's because, come on, if I have goddesses, they have to be beautiful. That's the way it works. Uh, I have four on backlog, and one of them is like, them... Uh, one of them is like four emotes that might take a hot second. Yeah, dude, again, you're the one managing your business, lady. Missy, you're the one managing your business. Can I sc- can I call someone non-binary, Missy? That shit is confusing to me. I don't know. I guess it is not inaccurate, technically. I don't know. Whatever. I don't know. I've, I don't care about nicknames like that, though, it just can be one of, okay, good, you're a cool person. I will make mistakes. Uh... I know that most of the time I'm just waffling, so don't expect like any deep, like, deep, deep subtle, "Is he, oh, he has me secretly", "Oh, he says that to spawn me", no, I'm just a dumbass that waffle. When you say "Brah!", I'm all gender and no gender at the same time. I, I, I really don't get... Where? Oh, cherry, oh yeah. I, I don't get the gender thing at all. I mean, I really don't, but that's mostly because I'm very... How do I say that? Like, to me, like, this has never been any doubt. So it's like... So I'm like, okay. But it's like, to me, it's like, why bother? Because it has never bothered me! So that's why, to me, it's like, eh... Look at it, I'm like, "That's a lot of trouble for no reason", because it's, it's never been any reason for me. So from my perspective, it's like, that's a lot of things that I have absolutely don't care about. It's like, fun, I guess, that... I have fun with it, I, I don't get about it, I don't get anything about it. I mean, it's just, you know, and again, it's, it's mostly, yeah, you know. What's NB again? NB, what's NB again? I don't remember what NB means. Ah! Okay, no, I really like, I'm not... Huh. Seems to have a lot more hormonal issues. I almost want to, oh no, research a brain! No! Uh... Is there even a stat by that? Simple P- PC, PC, what the fuck is PCOS? Simple PCOS, what's PCOS? Sorry, I don't, English not my first language. Um... Yeah, but what is a stat about, oh! Ah! And you could, say, hyalocystic ov- oh, fuck, that's... And you could, say, hyalocystic ov- oh, fuck, that's... Hyalocystics with multiple cysts. Oh no! Oh shit! Uh, I mean, I know it's me... Yeah! I sure will not work out for you! I barely work out for myself, I'm a lazy fucker! Uh, hormonal issues, I guess there's no stat about that. Huh. Sorry, I did some stat research. Because I ma- again, that's just how my brain works, I'm like, "How does that work?", you know? That's in the workout of... "You don't have to", "Oh, you're freed from cat prison", "Nice", "You are no mobile again". That one. So what should be... The first one has to be the mask. But what kind of mask? Because it's... Hmm... Yeah, move your ass, you need to get your wave. Uh, because you have to pick her up on work. I think. I lost track of time, I'm too entertaining. My skills are too great! Uh... Um... Works. Ask. What could be... Uh, was... Huh! Are they work, works? Could be that. Forgetting that wave, oh come on, don't talk that much shit. She was busy, they were busy, whatever. Ah, damn it. Hmm... Ah! Need to tease, I love them both so much, yes, they are really nice. Nice people. Nice peeps. Uh, brah brah brah. Hmm... Meh! What should it be? What should it be? Yeah, so again, gentlemen, if you're still here, um, I may have a lot of work for you. Because I need to, I need to, um, just DM me, DM easy, um, I've got to send you this image. I'll just send you a DM, I'm just... I just need to DM you. I just sent you a DM to ask you for this shit. Because I want to do it, uh... Yes, I do. They do bonus to Inquisitor, yes. Exorcist and Inquisitor. That plus 10 when it comes to interg- interrogation. They get, uh, they get a bonus to, uh, that, yes. Uh... Yeah, actually, they get two, yeah, they get two bonuses. They get two, they make one bonus to Exorcist. And they can use either Exorcist or Ar- or Artificer. Uh, brah brah brah. Okay. Hmm... If it was the mask, what could be the tier one? Because they're technically a turret. So the most logical would be... A gun. Hmm... A tier machine? Uh, tier machine gun? Uh, last one was a squad. And the last one should be like... Uh, gilded cage. Armor. Yeah. I mean, if you defeat them in, what, that's a lot. Okay, the, the main problem is that, um, the, um... Is that if you defeat them, then you're going to interrogate them. And if you already have like plus 10 to skill rolls, and Exorcist to Inquisitor to... Becomes the outbreak. Yeah, that's what I, I knew my expression was right. Look like, okay. Because I like the idea of, yeah. Without getting in trouble, what do you mean? You can, so you can use it on stuff? I mean, if you beat them up, technically that would count. You would beat them up, I mean, if you literally beat their asses, like, you're, you are defeated them in battle. It can be said that way, it can be... Uh, Torohi. Uh, do you have any opinion on Daggerheart? I need to refresh my memory on Daggerheart, I know it's the one... The problem is, how do we define a combat encounter? Technically, if they, if they rise up to, to fight against you, it's a combat encounter. It has, it really has to be worded that way. It would have to be worded properly, I think. It was a question of wordage, I think. Yeah. Uh, yeah, but I don't remember, so I'm going, I'm, I want to give it a fair shake! A Daggerheart PDF. Okay. Uh, what is this? Uh, I suggest, and I was returned during gameplay session. To go, then, and with particular regard to make the game your own. Okay, that's... Ruling of, what? Oh my god, I don't care, just show me the fucking system. Okay? Ancestries features, yeah? Clank, Zakuuna, Dwarf. Yeah, fairy font. Fia Boruk, Fungrel. Um... I mean, that seems pretty basic. And domain cards. Okay. It seems like a reskin, almost like a, a reskin of DND. It's very bare bone. It seems very bare bone. Yeah, it's just, it's... Yeah, it's, it's a Tabletop RPG. No, I think it goes donkey punch. I guess because donkey in British is an insult. Like you donkey, maybe? Yeah? Hey, I don't decide, I mean, I do kinda. I mean, sage is... Yeah? Okay? Uh, okay. Troubadour, wordsmith. I mean, a troubadour is a wordsmith. Okay, whatever. I guess wordsmith is more like a poet. Why is the icon so fucky? Someone did not format that document pretty, pretty good. Uh, beast from options. Oh yeah. Uh... I mean, it doesn't seem to be that special, to be entirely honest. Yeah. It's, it's a Tabletop RPG. I mean, it's pretty much them, it's, okay. It feels like they picked out what they liked about DND and reskinned it. I mean, it's just, no, I'm not bored by it, it's just, okay. Let us start with, why did you ask the question? Like, do you like it? Uh, is it the thing, like, do you like it, or do you, did you work on it, or... I need to close my windows. No, it's just, again, it was just to give it a fair shake, it's just, there's nothing which stands out. Really. Because if you look at like, um, I'm going to compare it to other. Uh, what's the, uh, Filipino? Uh, than the... My friend bugs me about it. No, for example, you have like Tabletop RPGs made by Filipinos with Filipino mythology and mechanics. Um, I don't... Is it Filipino or is it, um, Gombat Banoa? Uh, Gombat, is Gombat Banoa? Uh, Gombat... Banoa? Uh, Gombat Banoa. Uh, you know, then you have like Southeast, Southeast Asian Tabletop RPG, Gombat Banoa, that I also own, I also have it, I have the, I, I bought the PDF. Uh, and you know, there's a bunch of stuff, a bunch of different like, um, uh, gameplay, a lot of influence and stuff. Yeah, sword fantasy drama, yeah, but Southeast Asian with guns and stuff, you know? And there is a lot of cultures, there's a lot of semantics, you know? It's, it's so distinct, you know? And it has specific, you know, gameplay loops and stuff that is inspired by the Filipino stuff. By Filipino like mythology and culture and, and, and sword fantasy. So also like a lot of like, some quote-unquote "heavy" quote-unquote "rushu" aspects to it. Uh... And I guess, you know, it's just that, um... Daggerheart gets a lot of attention, uh, because, because of course Critical Role is very famous. It is, which, uh, did not in any way influence the mudskate, the coqueta rider knight and swordfish rider archer. Uh, no, it did not actually. I mean, it did not influence me in making it because I did not look into it that much. I, I... Is, is there's one? Yes, there is actually a coqueta rider. Huh. It actually did not influence me, because I did not remember it existed. I guess greats, great minds think alike. I mean, I'm the one who did a lot of that stuff, no? I mean, I remember that I'm the one who literally said like mudskater, because I wanted someone riding a guppy, because it sounds like fun. But maybe you put it more into the mechanics and I just did the themes, I don't know. Because I remember that the, that I wanted that one because I was thinking about what could be a good aspect. I, I don't think so. I don't think so. No, the, literally like, I know that the mudskipper is mine when it comes to like the mudskipper, the, the fish. I know that I did the fish. I know that I did the fish. Because I was like, I need something to clear up the tunnels, and I was like... And mudskipper is funny, because I needed one more a class for the hissarnokletos. Because I wanted the mudsk- mudskater, mudskipper. Yeah. Yeah. Um... I think we need, we'd have everything. I just need to, um... I agree to close up the, um, the, my blind, my, 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 my shadows, so be right back. Uh, and also I remembered, model. Also, I, also I remembered that Daggerheart is supposed to be bland because they want the, uh, ambiance and stuff to be through the settings. So, they want it to be, uh, they want it to be like just the rule set, and then you apply the rule set to different settings. And, and they can actually pull that through. They can put that off because of the fame that they have. But, I think that's the difference between, um... I think the logic is a, hello Captain Clone. Uh, hello Captain Clone, hello, hello, L D. Uh, gentlemen, and Dakar, and Tor. Thank you everyone for being here. And so, I think they can pull that off because they have enough fame to actually do that. It's just that as independent, uh, Tabletop RPG creators, that we don't have that much fame, influence and stuff, we can't really do that. Because if we don't have a strong branding, if we don't have a strong theme, we, we get no eyeballs. Like a build upon with your PC, yeah, 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 but it's, it's, it's just that I think they said that, um... Yeah, but also like, i- in a lot of ways, I think they're also thinking about the streaming part. Because now that they can, that they jump from, um... It seems that now that they use Daggerheart, they jump into more different, like, different settings that they make themselves. So it's also a way for Matt Master to be able to explore different, uh, eras, different themes, different ways on stream. So to make like every campaign very different, very unique. Which makes sense from a streamer Tabletop RPG standpoint. I don't do that, because I'm a tabletop RPG writer and creator, and we stream our tabletop RPG because we cannot get away with not making it unique. Because if we don't, we don't get any eyeballs. The game is the setting point. Uh, so it has to be unique, it has to be special, it has to like, stand out. And, that's why, in my opinion... It's not special, because, in my opinion, it probably wants to like... It probably wants... It probably wants to like, uh, make the setting special. Uh... It's a bit less heavy. Uh... And that's, pretty much, I think, what the aim is. I think that's the way he's thinking about it, because I know that Matt Master can design shit, he can design shit, he's... He can, he can game design stuff pretty well. He has been playing tabletop RPG a long time, he has done some homebrews. He had done a lot of homebrews. So, if I have to extrapolate, I think that's pretty much what the, the plan is. The plan is to make it bland. To, not make it bland, but like, to make it as generic as possible. Because the special aspect is going to, like, the, the, all of the... All of the, um, things that are going to stand out visually and gameplay-wise and stuff like that are going to be added by the setting. That's the expectation. From DMs, I think that, it pretty much read, here's my game, homebrew it. And that's actually what he says from the beginning. Here's my game, homebrew it. And, you know, so that's why, in my opinion, it's built that way. So, um, which... Which also means, that there is a lot more stress put on the DM. Because the DM... Because in-
Homebrew as many sexy wafers as you can into my game Neveren.
Uh, that's what I'm doing. Many goddesses are pretty. All of them are pretty. Because they're goddesses. And all of, none of the, I guess the maggot god and the bug gods, even the bug goddess can... Would she? I guess to get what she wants from mortals, she would. Oh, sexy maggot guy, oh! Sounds squishy, sounds like... Would he give a shit? I don't know, I have no artist doing it. Hey Ruby, do you want to design this fuckable bee? I guess, I guess, we'll let tomorrow's could be like, from, in the vor community. Getting devoured by gigantic worm, very much vor. You know? Neveren, my moon and star, gods that sit at me at the dinner table. Uh, I'm supposed to kill you, sir, no. My moon and stars, you are supposed to hug me to death. No, I'm not gay, by the way. I am pansexual, I swing only for my neveren. I mean, that's actually true. Because it doesn't really give a shit about what their appearance of neveren is. Uh, blah 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 blah, what was I doing? Oh yeah. I was finishing the LD class, trying to. What if? What if? Ah! What if? Okay, no, no, no. Um... Uh, you can wear... Uh, your... Should I give them? Should I give them like, hmm? Should I give them roleplay? Like outside of combat forms as well? Because that would be interesting. You know what? Yeah, I need to do that. You can wear your... Uh, you can shift your... Into a... You can shift your exact into a... To a wearable... Uh, into a wearable item that can be used, uh, that can be used, uh, for a different effects. Different effects depending, oh my god, I need to hate this. Why did I give that to LD? Wait, LD also do that? Should I give it earlier? Why do I give that to LD? That's a mistake, so you need to be terrible with it. Table for me, wait for her. Hey Peter! How you doing Peter? Should I give it early, or should I give it late? I'm doing pretty good, how you doing man? I've done prank on your normal bank. It's just no difference. Wait, did I remove the weapons? I think I did. Did I? I think I did. Huh? Huh? Did I? Yeah, I did. Seems like I did. Okay. I don't remember doing that. I guess not all classes should give access to weapons on top. You learned weapons soon enough. Hmm, you know what, I'm going to put that one at level 7. Wearable item that can be used to different effect depending... To, uh, wearables that can be used to different effects, uh... Why is there so much space? Why is there that much spaces? Uh, dude, I don't know, I'm going to stream. Uh, you can shift your exact into a wearable item that can be, that can be used, can be used, can be, 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 be used, be, that's be. Hey Ruby, want to make a fuckable, fuckable bee? Uh, ta, 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 too bad, that was a funny one. I chased her away with a sexy bee. She's not. She's no longer in the chat. I, I don't see her no more. She fucked off before I could make the joke, that's sad, that would have been good timing. Uh... Yeah, you can, but she's not there, so she's not going to see it. I mean, I don't see her. Oh Vasery, hello Vas. I see you lurking. Hello my dude, how you doing? I've been doing good. You can still add people, they're just not there, they're not, not going to see it. Meh! Okay. Hmm... Asaa, what, what asaa? What's happening? Are you good LD, or do you just too many calls and not going crazy? Did they try to tell, did they try to tell, totally not important, what? What? Depending on the exact... Is it a dance? Okay. Good for you! Okay, I don't know the difference. I'm guess, I'm guessing that extreme is, is more difficult. Why do you keep... I'm not going to question. Do what you want, do what you want, dearie, do what you want. Do what you want, I, okay. Go off girl, I don't know. I mean, good for you, I would not want you to, uh, fuck up your knee. Good! Congratulations on your shukshesh, at doing a very difficult dance. Uh, different effect depending on the exact... Uh, by the way LD... Back to our cut and then please to... Thank you, thank you. I can hear your voice saying, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Uh... If... Do you, do you, do you think that I should add fashion souls? To your, to this character path? Because I'm going to add them as wearable items, instead of just dolls, as well, for like, roleplay purposes. Do we get bonuses? Fashion souls? Yes, okay. So the real question is, should I... Should I give a basic one? Should I give a basic item and then say it's like, do what you want? Okay. I'm going to do a basic one then. Uh, little, 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 will... Uh, is, is a, is either an eye ask? Is it a night mask or masquerade mask? Or masquerade mask? Uh, then it's whipping, it's a despair. A despair is a veil. It's a widow's veil. The widow's veil. Uh, with silver tears, uh, jewelry. So despair is widows, windows, widows, widows veil, what is it? Did you totally correct? Oh, damn it. I think it totally corrected into windows, it's a windows veil, what's a windows veil? I don't know! It's a window jail. Do you like the window tail? I don't know what's so funny to me to say window tail. Uh, despair is a widow's veil with silver tears jewelry. You know what? Let's keep the theme going, shall we? Uh, hope is a corset. Spite corset. I'm terrible. Is a spite corset, uh, or cola? What is the name for those ones? I think it's a posture cola. Yes, that's what I wanted to say. Absolutely. I am terrible. I am bad. But listen, either go hard or you go home. Uh... You mean, second, first, second or third? The first and second? Maybe? The third is more concerning. The third is way more concerning. Uh, haha, haha, haha. Okay, I am terrible. And it's right back to SaaS? It's right back to the SaaS, to the SaaS space? Uh... I don't mean source. I think it's right to write SaaS. So Eldritch, which one do you have? I'm guessing chokers. I'm guessing chokers because I can see you having like, a few fair, fair few chokers. Because Goth girl, Goth girl gonna goth, what, what can I say? What can I say? A good girl gonna, gonna goth, that's the way it is, that's the way it is. I don't make the rules, I do. I am fully innocent of any, um, sasibaka accusation, I'm just applying logic. They sent me back and said that they would love to draw a... Why did you? I will give them a choice when they open their commission. And I may commission a bunch.
This dress, what's the difference? Oh yeah, gang is often more formal setting with a rank and wear this. It doesn't make any sense. Fucking women fashion. I imagine it can create me from one, is that the exact spirit, whatever is in the item? It comes out of it, I mean, whatever, you don't have to specify. Or a gown. I mean, I said you can shift your exact into a wearable item. Uh, instead. Instead of a, uh, instead of s- staying in the, uh, um, wax doll form. Yeah. Yeah, I know, the item is the exact. The, it's, yeah, the item is the exact. I'm just wait to say it, that class is sus, but fashionably so. Very fashionable. Very fashionable, let me tell you. Some people will have a field day with that, trying to draw that, trying field day, let me tell you. They probably want to make sure they turn into accessories, doesn't it, because, hmm, yes. Yeah, hmm. Because we have a spiked collar, we have a spiked, we have corset, maybe boots, maybe booties? How do you say that? Um. You take high, thigh high, I think is the word, thigh high. Thigh high boots, yeah, that's the word I was looking for. You, you know what, it's a fashion source now, it's, it's a fashion source, you get booties, here we go. I guess it cover your normal shoe. I mean, they can just cover your normal shoes, you know, it's just, it's wax, you know, it's like shaped wax. So you could, whatever, don't care. It's your problem. This item will run. Should I just make the item fancier and fancier? And then it's literally full blown, like. Do I just make the item fancier and fancier? Then, because then it's, yeah. You know what, I'm going to do that. That's a cool thematic, that's fashion souls. Let down the earth. And it's good, gives good roleplay options. Better top of the picture roleplay, by the way. Why is it always, why does it fuck up the spaces so much? When you rise, take yourself back. It does weird shit right now. Uh. Hmm. If I had to put less onto you and more onto the player, you could use that the exact design eye mask. Meh. It's boring. Then, then it's more boring and also like I can't add more when you level up. Because then I can't add more when you level up if I do that. Which is less fun. Is that shit is just going to be your roleplay stuff? So be happy before we get back to work, okay? Why? Fine, the thigh high socks now. Fine, you get thigh high socks, here you go. Are they just not stockings? What's the difference? I think the material is the difference. I don't know. As a heterosexual, heterosexual man, my job is not to care about the clothings, to remove them when the time is right. I mean, if the time is right, I can consent. In case anyone that need doubt of like as a mind's going like, blee. That was the implication. The implication is when it's time to do the deed, when Messi wants to. That sounds bad. Kinda, not really, I mean, it's just, uh, you know. That's all I'll say. Hmm. Okay, what is? Hmm. Uh. A lower face mask, how do you say that? Half face, I guess. I guess it's half face mask. Uh. Or lower half face. That's like silent despair, you know, exence. Uh, spiked corset, I guess spiked corset, choco, postchola, yeah. What is the, what is the word for, I guess it's my time to do fashion souls, I guess, I don't know, it just became that way. It's the other one. I heard. Is that so? Uh, you get. Upgrading this will grant you. Uh, we're going through. An additional. Should I just make them like a function? Additional, uh, bonus. Uh. Uh, and there's good, we just one this time. Uh, the. Uh, here is a. Of suggested appearance. Listed, uh, looks for said items, or said items. The player decides. Another. But. Uh, the item must be in the open. Uh, must be visible. Visible. Uh, must be visible. Uh, cannot be hidden. Right, ah, John. Ah, but that doesn't work with the socks. What, a belt, whatever? Because it has to be visible. Because eye mask is visible, masquerade mask is visible, veil is visible, eyeless hood is visible, lower half face mask is visible. Uh, hope, spiked corset, visible, uh, choker and portico, la, visible. So that doesn't work. Thigh high boots. Uh, but you got the second. Um. Uh, ah. Must be visible. Must be visible, yeah. Have it gone to, so what should, what could work? I think we need the bonus for. Yeah, I think we need the bonus for, hmm. Despair should be interrogation, uh, wheel should be exorcism. To. Uh, plus five to your. Uh, exhaust, no, that one is what, it's wheel, wheel is exorcism, to your exorcist. Exorcist skill, that one should be. Uh, gives us five. Uh, to your, uh, what was the other one? Interrogation. No, actually interrogation should be that one. This plus five to your. Uh, gives plus five to your, uh, interrogation, interrogator, I said interrogator is interrogation. Don't remember, don't remember, don't remember. Don't remember. Uh. It's interrogator, I think, should be interrogator confessor, we still keep using the same. It's, it's all it's worded that I'm looking, inquisitor, yeah, you're right. It's inquisitor. But we have interrogation as well, no? No, it's only inquisitor, maybe? Because we have inquisitor and we have, yeah, 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 okay, 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 okay. Should it be lockpicking? No, because we have exorcist and we have, uh, inquisitor. Inquisitor. Inquisitor skill. Hmm. Should it be something else? That one, the last one is what? Despair. Hmm. Remains, I remain. I guess confessor works with despair. Uh, 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 uh. Uh, but item must be visible, this is the, this is, um. Like your exact. Only one. Uh, can be chosen the same as the exact you chose. Na 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 na, and I think at level eight, or maybe ten, not at ten, I could do that. Yeah. Uh, because that one is a level five, I think if I look at conditions. If I could give advantage on resisting some effects. Yeah, that could work. Which is the one that is eyeless, eyeless hood, despair, okay. Na na na. What could be a good item? Eyes. Charlie, my Charlie line. Um. Shall pray into my name. Uh, ba 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 ba. Which one? Ah. Right. Your my name. Which one, which one, which one, which one, which one, which one, which one? Which one? Which item should it be? Oh, so you mean a trash panda, being a trash panda, flying like a trash panda? More like a psychotic trash panda, actually. I think you found a psychotic flying trash panda, let's see what you did. And eat your shit. And by the way, Griffin's artificial, if there is arti-, if they are in the. I mean, one tried to gouge my eyes out for like, for like at least four months, so yeah, I don't, I don't really like them. Seagulls, stop it, stop it now. Who they're way worse than rats. Rats at least run away, they, they only, they attack back when they want to take your shit. But it's mostly blunder, like rats are not that aggressive, seagulls are fucking aggressive as fuck. They're not rats, like, they're not rats, rats don't attack that much. They're more like stray, like stray dogs with rabies, with wings, that's what they are. So wheel should be what? Hunger and spite, very important, hunger, rage and spite, that's all they have. Uh, ba 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 ba. Hmm. Uh, ba 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 ba. I mean, vultures only care about dead bodies, so they don't want anything to do with you. Uh, like your exact only one can be chosen, you know what, I'm just going to put it there, uh, the item. Even if your exact. Is summoned in battle, but will lose its. Its bonuses. There you go, so that we don't have the problem of being naked. Uh. Should I make despair gimp? Because I want wheel to have like, um. A gown. A gown or. A, what is the word? A sc-, uh, a long silk scarf. Like a gown, a long silk scarf or. Uh, you know what, I'll make a girly, uh, diadem. Uh, diadem, let's do the princess, wheel is a princess now, I don't know why, but they are. Uh, hope. Let's make a rocker. A spiked, um, shoulder. A spiked, uh, leather. Let's do it, spiked leather, let's do, I'm alive, good for you. Uh, by the way, I changed the stuff so that if you summon the exact, you still wear the item, but you don't have the bonuses in battle. It's only outside of battle. So now there's no problem of people being naked. Uh, the item needs to be visible at all time. Uh, so, uh, so sadly, thigh high socks will not happen. Because, uh, you need to see them. Unless you have small shoes, like not like huge shoes. Eye need to be visible, whatever, so I, I just put boots in. I just put boots in, whatever. And like I died. Eddie. Uh, the wheel one is princess now. We knew him well. I think it's probably because he's at the, at a place, no, he's still has internet. Um, so, okay. So right now, oh, and he's back, uh, back home with Nari, back to cleanings, good luck, soldier. So I will, wait, Zork, I know you. Uh, yeah, you're one of the siblings, uh, foxy sibling. Uh, so again, I would like to thank all of the lurkers and not lurkers, everyone pretty much. Uh, Captain Clooney, thank you very much for, for being here, hanging out in the lurka. Uh, LD, again, thank you for being here, Daka, thank you for being here, Tor, Hoi, Hoi, Tor, Hoi, yeah, Tor Hoi. Uh, thank you for being here, fast, thank you, my dude. And, um, Zork, what's his name, there's something else than Zork, I know people could do something, the. That is another name. I know people could do something else. Uh, so what now, the wheel exact is of eye mask, masquerade mask, a set of thigh high boots. Uh, despair is widow's veil, eyeless hood, or a lower face ma-, a lower half face mask. Uh, hope is a spiked corset, choker or poster collar. One is exorcist confessor or inquisitor, I also specify that players decide what the item looks like, those are just suggestions. Those are just suggestions, if you want to, if you want, I don't fucking know, a baseball cap, you can get a baseball cap. Weird, not gonna lie, or a beret or some shit, I don't know, whatever, whatever. Uh, you decide, you decide. Who cares? So, and right now, uh, the second choice that I'm starting to put in is. Um, wheel will get a go, a gown, a long silk scarf or a diadem princess. A princess classic, like, you know, uh, ball stuff, you know, like noble women. Uh, hope has a spiked leather, leather coat, um, a. Spiked harness, can you wear a harness over a corset? I think you can, yeah, you can, um, a good spiked harness. Uh, emulating. The cage. Emulating the cage, um. A spiked, uh, long coat. Uh. Emulating the iron maiden. So you literally wear their torment as fashion, that sounds terrible. Uh, and people should be terrible by putting this class, just say. And what should be despair? Should it be like the meme, like a fucking goth, like a dark goth Lolita's, like, dress? Should you really push that far? Should it be? Should it be? Down again. Yeah. Yeah. Lol, yeah, lol. No? Wow, okay. Okay, fine, LD, what should it be then? What kind of Gothic should it be for despair? The one you're probably going to choose or some, or one or the other one, I don't know, which one would you want? Which one would you want? Uh, emulating the cage. A. Uh, how do you say that, a. Cage like. How do we name like the color that pops out? A dress, uh, that pop out. Do you name the tip of goth, or, yeah. But for ladies. French tennis play, I know. Upturn? I don't know, whatever. Um, yeah, you can, you can, you can say it, if you want to. Apparently LD is not a fan of Gothic Lolita, wow, 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 as a VTuber, wow. Wow. I'm just being little shit. Victor, cyber is too much, Victorian maybe. Hmm. Or we could go with chains. Like chains to wear you down, like despair. Hope is not romantic. Hope is straight up like wearing like spikes and shit. It's all spikes, it's all spikes, harnesses, corsets and shit, it's all restraint, they're all restrained. Yeah, they're all like restrained because she's in, she's in the cage, that's the idea. Because it's a spiked, it's a spiked lung coat, a gilded spiked harness. A cage like. Hmm. Cage that crown, maybe? Roman Gothic. Okay. St-, maybe steampunk, I don't know. I don't like, be a, hmm. Hmm. I mean, all the goth stuff is overdone, it's everywhere, so. Hmm. Because that's too much, that's too much. Hmm, you know what, I'm going to go with the idea of chains. Should the chains be bare or should the chains be, uh. Actually silver, yeah, they keep it as silver, uh, silver chains. Legs and. Uh, ankle. And wrist chains. And wrist chains. Ah, f... Whatever. I'm doing my own shit now. Predictable. Um... Eh... Hmm... Hmm... Because I want to keep the silver chain stuff. Yeah, I know, I know. Because I want to keep the theme strong. Eh, dispers silver... Ankle and wrist chains. And wrist chains, what should be the next one? Does that have a veil? Veil, eyeless hood. So yeah, both of them work with chains. Eh, baby. Eh, ankle and, yeah, I need to ankle, eh, silver ankle or... A silver ankle or, eh, wrist chains, depending on the style they want. Or wrist chains. Eh, what goes with... What goes with despair? What goes with despair? Because that's two of them, because if it's both of them, it's a bit too much. Eh, and also I'm lazy. I guess I don't get lazy about it. Wrist, wrist. Yes, chain. Um... Hmm... Meh! Eh, blah, 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 blah. Dispers silver ankle or wrist chains. Eh, what could be a good one? Eh... Eh... Should I really do it? You have to fuck it. Eh, mercury. Silver looking... Eh, full bodysuit, here we go. Like drowning in despair and in poison. Here you go, gimpy achieved somewhat. Here you go. Done. Eh, dispers silver ankle and wrist chains, a mercury silver looking full bodysuit. Eh, what else could work? Well, if I switch chain with a bow and chain. Eh... A silvery, I don't, eh, bow and chain. A silver bedroved bow and chain, here we go. A silver... Bedroved, eh, bow and chain. Here you go, done. If you're not happy with it, change it, don't care, but I did my job. So then, to the game design. What bonuses should they get on top of the original? Hmm... That one is exhausted. So what should they be able to resist? Will should give resist, like a resist chance to despair. Gain resistance to the... Despair condition. Eh, AKA... Eh, advantages. Do not, I just gain, um... Oh, get resist, resistance. Resistance to the despair condition. And then at third level, you get like immunity. Eh, gain resistance to despair condition because it's hope. No, it's, eh, actually, hope should give that. Yeah, the hope should give that. Hope can counter... Eh, despair. Makes sense. Eh... We don't really have... Should, Will should, I know! Eh, Will should give resistance to the charm condition. To the charm... Eh, condition. And the third one should be... What should despair give? What despair, what should dis... Eh, we have to look at the, maybe anxiety? Yeah, re- resistance to anxiety. There you go. You're already despairing. It doesn't matter. You're not anxious anymore. You get up. It's kind of fucked up. Eh, but don't think about it. Eh, gives... Resistance to... The, eh, anxiety condition. At level eight, you literally just get immunity. Which, yeah, because then you become, yeah, that makes sense. That seems like good, right? I mean, it is good. It is good. But it's just, yeah. Eh, by the way, Ruby, if you sit here, I did some fashion swords, it's terrible. No one should have trusted me with this. I mean, eh, um... Not those bonuses. Eh, you... Keep those bonuses even if... You... The chat is silent. It's making me nervous. They're looking at me disapprovingly, going tat tat tat. And I'm still going to do it. This floor. No. They are not quite, they are quiet. Like, you, people said nothing for a bit. On the call. No, I'm, I'm just, I'm joking. But you see, I feel self-conscious because I made this. Yeah, just because, I just feel self-conscious because I made this. I shouldn't. It's a great idea. I'm great. Eh, yeah, you can, I mean, if you summon, eh, your exact... To battle. Gilded cage is where I put comet. I mean, now you can swing comet around. If comet count as an exact, I mean, it does deal mental damage, that is true, when it's a cursed shit. So you can, you can put your, you can put your comet into, um, a silver plated iron maiden, or you can put him into, um, a cage. Wait, I'm sure I changed something. Hmm... Did I not? Ah. What? What? It's the same. Oh, yeah, no. It's the same. It's the same. I'm dumb. Oh, yeah, because I wanted it to be sooner. I wanted it to be sooner, because, eh, then you can use it actually as like a core feature. Um, because if it's too late, then you, yeah, you can't really use it for long. So now you can swing your comet and attack people with your comet. Eh, will the comet scream and ask why have you done this? Probably. I mean, the comet takes a lot of damage when you do that, so... I mean, it is, comet is, how do you call comet again? Your, your abused pet owl or some shit? Oh, get the domin- what? Why is it two? What? Eh, it was, eh, just the, eh... Wait, has a difference? Eh, shoot, oh. They can shoot, AKA perform the attack action twice per turn. Eh, and then, eh, range of six. Eh, just treat the target for free, target for free, because that's the moment they can shoot it. Yeah, it's the same. Yes, the biblicia create angel owl, so would work. Why does it work? Why does it work? Why? I didn't even plan on this. Oh, one more evolution, that's why. One more, that's why. I'm stupid. I almost deleted it, because I was like, wait, I don't see any difference, because there's no difference, you just get one more. Oh, I'm dumb. Okay. I'm dumb, goddammit. God's checking zami, I think. I'm stupid. I mean, I'm not stupid, I actually... I'm not stupid, I just, I, I just, I almost made mistakes, that's what it is. Eh, I always made a mistake. I did, I did, I did a mistake. Eh, you must made a mistake, that's just what it is. Eh, I just made a mistake, that's it. Eh, almost made a mistake, but it's not. It's good, I swear. Um, then, you can, you can look at the second doors, those are which activate to get, to, to get dominion two. It's into one new form, this can perform two actions, they're infusion selves. They had performed the two actions, they have themselves, eh, get, but they can perform the two actions... What? To a new form. Oh. Okay. They can, um... Eh, their fusion form... Eh, their fusion... Form of ac- as access, as access to, eh, both their... Sorry, I was just like looking at you like, what the fuck did I write? Both of their actions. Both of their actions from, eh... From, eh, greater, eh, dominion one and two. Dominion and, eh, greater, eh, dominion, eh, two. And get, eh, those two actions on top, so they get four actions. AKA four maneuvers and four spells. That's what they get. Should I make it? Because now it's too much summony. I mean, not really, because one of them is literally... Divided gun. Hmm... Hmm... I mean, that's more use. And it's also allows you, like, just in case you're in a pinch, you don't have to spend an action to do that. So it's like, if you need to fight better and you're like stuck in the middle of it, then you can just switch it, you know. Switch it into a gun, switch it into a weapon, and then go at it, right? I don't think it should be a gun. I think all of them should be, all of them should be a weapon. All of them should be a weapon. All of them should be a weapon, because that's the idea, into a... Weapon. Okay. But shoot, hmm... Okay, I have an idea. I don't know if it's dumb, but I kind of like it. I'm actually going to do it. What if? Hear me out. You can choose between two things. At level ten. You can choose either... Eh, you both, you fusion your shit, as per usual, but that fusion could be either a summon or a, or a weapon. And that weapon would be a fusion of the two weapons that are associated... With those, um, beings. I will select one, you don't have a choice, okay? Because that's too much. Eh, because that's too much. Yeah, I think I should do that. I think I should do that. Does it sound like a good idea? Yes, I tried to get some attention from chat, chat, this is the right idea. I don't know why. I don't know why I want to be such a... Oh, hello, Hans. I know. I'm just being a little shit. Okay, so, oh my god, I'm crushing down. And I should not drink more coffee. Ooh. Time to switch for juice. Time to switch for juice. Eh, the idea was... Because you, eh, you can turn your exact when they die. You can turn them into a weapon as well. Like, you have a choice. The weapon is, um... Eh, the, you can turn them into a weapon, the weapon is, um, the good, the advantage of the weapon is that unlike resummoning, you don't have to spend a full turn doing it. It's, you can do it like, like that, like, like immediately. Okay, I'm, I'm keeping the actual statement, so it's a you do you fam. Okay. The, the rest is, is a Dagotha reference. Eh, it's because... Because you don't have to spend the time, like, if you're like in a pinch... No, it's a Dagotha, eh, it's a Dagotha meme reference. Because that's a lot of the memes about Dagotha, it's him saying racist shit, shit against Argonians and stuff. It's a meme, that guy's memeing. Um, and Todd Howard is the, um, the original writer of a lot of Elder Scrolls. Eh, which people hate because he makes terrible decisions. His writer owner, I believe. I think he fucked off, but I don't remember. I've not played one of that games since, since Skyrim, actually. And Deckers out. And Deckers back. I'm guessing he's in the part of, eh, of his trek home. No, because he still has work to do, I think. I don't know, whatever. I don't know. I, I, I can't pretend to remember by, to really remember like Deckers shift hour, because it depends. Yeah, that's what I thought. Eh, because you said 3.5 hours, I was like, that's not 3.5 hours. Um... What's this thing? Yeah, so the advantage... Is that when you resummon, you have to spend a turn resummoning the exact. Because I got gifted for what, what, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, yeah, because you started later, so you just picking a plate, like doing your later shift. Because you started later, that's why. Yes, that's what you said yesterday, yeah. Eh, oh, yeah, you entered, we're doing pretty good? We're doing pretty good, Manek. Oh, yo. Eh, it's more, we're doing pretty good, Manek. How are we doing, man? Yeah, you'll be done in an hour, yeah. It's around midnight when you're done for me. Eh, so, the idea is that because you can immediately shift it, and those will be more powerful than your normal weapon. So, okay, then here comes the problem. This kind of a problem. Either... Yes, kind of a problem. Because that's way more designed than it should. Because that's way more designed than it should be. And I don't think it's really worth it, should I? Hmm, should I? I'm, I'm still thinking about it. Should I give them new weapons, or should I just make them... Empower their weapons? They're already, the weapons they already have. I don't get it, my shift attack should be a nice, easy night relative to the rest of the week anyway, I hope so. Empower, yeah. Yeah, because I don't think it's, because you already have plenty of weapons. And with your normal weapons, you can do synergies and shit, so it should be good. I think they should do the damage associated with the magic. So, empower makes, yeah, because if you change your weapons, you don't get the synergies. Synergies is like special attacks, magical attacks you can, you get with your weapons. So, yeah, I think it does make, I think it's, yeah, yeah, empower is better. So, the one thing then, I would say... I would say... Despair, um... What did I do for, what should I do, what did I do for, um... An sign? I would love a weapon that can go stronger as I level up. Uh, we can, we have that actually. Uh, we actually have that, uh, it's the, um... What's the name? It's the one that gets sentient weapons, it's the... Fuck. It's the fuck, I'm amazing. It's the segolati, the segolati get that. Uh, thank you, I, I guess, I have no idea, I don't know how to sing, I never sung, so... I mean, I'm just like, how do we say that, mutter? I don't say that. I just mumble when I say, when I do it, so it's like singy songy but not really. I do not say it. Uh, I do not detail it, uh... Uh, brain! You have to focus my brain, move! A mind and glass, okay. I think we should stay consistent? Yes, all of them, no, open thunder, despair and mercury, okay. Okay. Ogea. Ogea! I don't know why I keep saying ogea, but, was it funny? Uh, so, I would say a nice bonus, I think personally. Fuck, my glasses! Ah, ooh, that was, oof, that was, kind of, uh... Then that just proved what some yabi, oh my god, stop it! Manic is going to kill me, with all the positivity, like, no! French kryptonite! Why are you positive, uh, uh? Did you tell you like, my, my parents, that's what, I do the same thing, but I know that I, I say it once and that's it, because my... Now it's funny, it's brain me to, I... Literally like to tell you, my parents do the same shit that I do, because, you know, dogs don't like cats, as we've seen friends. Chef or body chef, uh, like parents, like children, you know? Uh, they say the negative about stuff, a lot. As a warning, you know, it's, it's like, they want to like make sure you're ready for the worst, so they keep saying the worst shit. Like, in a good way, in a sense, but they keep repeating it, if you, you know, if they say it once, you say, yeah, because you're used to them doing that, and they, they think you have not heard, or you don't take a serious it is, and they keep repeating it. And one time, they keep saying that shit, and they keep like being like, mm, mm, about, mostly about the RPG, to be entirely honest. I don't get much support about it, because it's a pipe dream, it's a pipe dream, at the moment, it's a pipe dream. I don't get much support about it. They keep saying, oh, you need to make money out of it, oh, you need to do this, it's, I'm like, you don't know how to create shit, okay, you're accountants, you don't know how to create shit, you count shit, not the same. Uh... And I know it's a crazy dream in a way. I know it is, but I'm working towards it. That's just what I do, that's just what I do. And again, it's just the thing, is... Oh my god, stop it! Stop it! Um... Flails, why are you flailing? Are you getting that many cores? Are you talking about flay's weapons? Because you already got flails. Do you? Cores, yeah, flailing is that way, okay. I thought, okay, that many cores, goddamn. Are you up, you're going to make it through, but flays are neat, I mean, we have flays. We have flays in the game, we have two kinds of flays. We have the sensor flail, which is literally like flail with fire inside, like, almost like, um, a sensor, you know, like in church. It's happened for you because you have some, oh my god! Oh my god! Stop it! Ugh, okay. Sensor flay, we have those, we have those, literally. Because I know that people like them, and they are very thematic, you know, they are very like evocative. If you look at the weapons, no, not waven. I've not played waven in a while. Um... I mean, despite the fact they're not the best weapons. Uh, we do have the flays, sensor flay, that can do bludgeoning of fire. And then we have the, um, the normal flail, that, uh, does less damage, because it's not two-handed. It's one-ended, and then it's aggressive and knockback, obsidian net force, okay. But you already have them, if, by the way, if you want to learn, uh, weapons as a character, uh, you can, because we, we had the discussion with Dagaz a while back, because we were like, we did not really like how the weapons were... Okay. Did I say that? I did, I did, I did, I did. We did not really like how weapons, I used face when I was playing Belagarth. Like, why? Okay. What is Belagarth? Is it like a setting? Belagarth. Oh, it's a medieval social combat society, I didn't know that existed! Oh! I used a warhammer, because I'm a very subtle man. I used, um, long axe and warhammer, was my two weapons, because I'm not in two, uh, because I'm not that good. I, I, I'm not that coordinated as a person, so I would rather smash shit. And I'm big, so if you're tall and you don't, and not, not that dexterous, warhammer. Because if the warhammer connects with them, they're going to feel it. Shield's a lot, the answer flays. Actually, people don't know one thing, but one of the strategies with long axes, is that you can hook the shield with your axe. If you do it well, uh, you can go over the shield to attack the, to literally attack the helmet, and then you can literally like, if you're on your team, because I used to do that, because I'm an asshole. Um, I need to yank the shield out of people for them, my body to like run in and warhammer their face. And like warhammer in their face, we are very subtle. We are very subtle bunch, we were not. Uh, so, at level one, you learn one weapon of your choice. Uh, at level three, you get another weapon, so if you want to test all kinds of weapons, you can. It's up to you, it's just like, you get a lot, you get weapon every two levels. So you get... Get one at one, one at, because you start at one, two levels, three, two levels, five, two levels, seven, two levels, eight, nine. I mean, technically Thanos would be me. Wait. 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 Oh no. I will not continue on that. There is some similarities and I don't like them. But I need those silly gloves, I can do it, I can do it all myself, I don't need those silly stones. I, I will chew on those stones. I will chew on those stones and shit them out, stupid stones. I am way better than stupid as stones. And I don't want to, I don't want death as a waifu. I actually killed death a couple of times. Because fate and death sucks. Yeah, the third goddess of death. The spider. The spider is actually the third goddess of death. I killed the first one, the second one pretty much. Uh... Uh, retired, endlessly. And then gifted a power to the third one. Which is the current one, which is Tawara. The spider goddess, which is also an id, and it is both an id and a half mind. And of some... There is some plotlines, that I did not explore yet. That's weird. Uh, so, how are you doing, Rookie? Hope you had a good day today, I don't know what time it is at your place, but I think you're... You're European, so it's late. I mean, it depends if you still live there or not. It is late, yeah, I mean, I'm a night shift guy, so late, ha, 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 late is my life, I start late, I end early. And people are like, you're weird, and I'm like, yes, I'm a night shift worker, we are all fucking weird. What do you mean I'm weird? Yeah, you're a student. That is true. That is true. Good, can, can this fucking mic arm stand, stop trying to go back? Okay. I know you're old, you're supposed to last longer than this, you're supposed to like be more sturdy and shit. Okay. It's saying go away, it's annoying, it's like, put it back, put it back, put it back. Uh, when I try to stream, is that annoying? Uh, then, 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 so, oh yeah, yeah, genius idea! Uh, because empowerment, uh... Into your weapon... Or current, uh, weapon, uh, to empower, to empower them. Uh, the visuals are up to you. Of said... Empowerment... Are up to the player! Because I, I don't know, do what you want... To the player, if you want to be like a girly girl and skip, and skip away, like in, in a fucking princess outfit, or magical girl outfit, you can. It's going to be fucked up, because then you're doing, still doing torture, but, you know... You can, you could be a happy psychopath. You could be a merry psychopath, that, that can happen. Uh... Yes! Eight to another, yes. So the empowerment should be, uh, the actual play, the actual angel shit. Hmm... Where are my keys? I mean, that's up to you, you're the one who's gonna play it! Nah! So... Then we have to decide on a number of turns that you can keep that going, because if not, it's a bit too powerful. But it's a level eight! So, nah... Uh, so what was, what was, what was, what was the, there! Uh, mind, get you, uh, mind... Uh, allows your... Weapon, no, wheel actually is the name now. Uh, wheel allows you to deal... Uh, your damage. As mental damage. Mental, as mental, or, uh, glass. And glass, because I need to check what it, I think it's earth, but I'm not sure, I think glass is earth. If I'm right, it makes sense, right? Yeah, glass, yeah, glass is earth, that's what I thought. Uh, as metal or earth damage? With that, I can follow the, uh, the Dagaz wheel of stuff, because mostly Dagaz, who, who, who was like, we need to do magical, is Dagaz was like, we need to like do magical damage, uh, based on stuff, and he was like, okay, fine. And the easiest way to do it is by doing like the super group. Uh, as damage, that we don't have a gajillion type of damage, which makes sense, it was a good idea, I agree, I put it in, Dagaz is validated. We validate Dagaz here, when they don't take our shit. Uh... But you know, even if it's not validated when it's a curse shit, it's validated, we do good shit. That's, that's how we Dagaz, that's how, that's how we deal with the Dagaz here. Uh, without the... Okay? Uh, wheel, then the second one is despair. Despair is... Despair is what? It's mercury and what? Uh, despair and mercury, okay. Despair is also mental. I think. Uh, where is it? Despair, 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 despair. Where the fuck is despair? It's... I don't know, you are about, you are about despair. It is also mental. So it is mental and, uh... Poison? No, mercury. Wait, mercury is also earth? Oh no. Oh no! Oh no! Because mercury is mercury, so mercury is also... Uh, it was not, you threw it at Dakka. No, because you spent points, so here you go. Here you go, you spent points. I, I did it to myself, so that you can have it. Here we go. You get double, because it was not at the right place. Uh, earth for days, earth for days. Uh... Uh, stretching down, thank you. And for the drinkies. Eldritch, you have a choice. It could be water. Or it could be juice. What? It's just LD, what? So water or juice, your choice. Need juicy juice. It's actually blue juice. Wait, is it the same? It's the same as I do, uh... Uh, it's actually, the juice is actually blue. Want to see what it looks like? By the way, it's naturally blue, like there's no colorant, there's no sugar, there's no added sugar. Uh, innocent... Infatigable. Haha. That's what it looks... It looks like that. It's blue. It's light blue. No, she's talking about the juice. No, just... Oh no, it says it's both. It's a French, it's a French brand. And by the way, that's, uh, that's a pun. It's a French brand, it's a French brand. It's a pen, it's like infatigable. Like, it's infatigable, but blue, like in French, blue is bleu, so it's infatigable, it's infat, it's like infatigable blue. It's a pun. The, the, the bottle is a pun. It's a vitamin plus, plus juice, because I like it. Uh... That one is actually very accurate, Dakka. And of course, innocent is the same as in English, meaning innocent. It's the same, it's the same. And in there, it has goyav. So, uh, what do you say goyav in English? Goyave? I don't know. Give me your blanket. She's the same as your hands. Give me your hands and your skins and your blankets. And your pillows. She wants a lot of things. Uh... It is the weirdest shit, because it's like... "Oh good sir, we want to do an offering to the, to the Eldritch Temple, to the love goddess temple. Can, can we, can we do this, this offering of blankets for the temple?" Like, "It is said in the legends of old that the Eldritch Love Goddess is in, is indeed hiding... In the blankets." Hiding in the blankets. She's hiding in the pillows and the blanket. If you ever have a glimpse of one of her many eyes... You... Yeah, just my room is, is, is a temple of, is... My room in the temple is nothing but pillows and blankets, everyone, yeah. Then there is a great portal! And it's a pool of blankets, yeah, pretty much. And if, if, if you want to summon the great prophet, that is me. Uh, you have to use the, you have to use the summoning portal of great watery wisdom. It's a jacuzzi. It's, it's a bathtub slash jacuzzi. Can't get out, and then you get hugged by an invisible force. By invisible force, what should you do? How can you escape the unknown embrace? Oh, do you? And then you hear a mysterious voice in your mind saying, "At pats, now." Like, "Uh, uh." "Where, where?" in front of you. Good. I have what, to beat the jacuzzi? I think you have not answered me because yesterday was poopy. Uh, was, was poopy on your connection or something, or Twitch, it could have been Twitch. I mean, I say that, but I literally run nothing. I, I just run like internet pages and music most of the time. I'm, I'm reaching the level of like somewhat tired that I, I need to run some, some winros. What, where am I the prophet? What do you want, what? I'm not, I'm doing nothing, I'm just in the pool. I'm just in my jacuzzi. They're like, "Where is the Aldrich goddess? Search the pillow, faceful. Search the blankies, blankets. You shall dive into her mysteries and enter the room straight from right ahead and then you can shut up." Prophet, you should not get drunk into the jacuzzi, and I'm like, "Shut the fuck up, cultist." You should shut your mouth or get slapped. You know what, you know what I'm imagining? I'm dead certain that in the Eldritch Love Temple, like under the, like, like hidden away in the blankies and the pillows, there's literally like a trapdoor to go... There's literally a trapdoor that goes straight to the archive. That's what I'm imagining. There's a trail of pillows. Feathers and pillows, mhm. Dude, I need to, I need to start to make comics. I have so many fucking ideas. Um... Dude, I could, I could literally do like comics as commissions for all the VTubers. Yeah, that's a great idea! Um, I should, I really should. I need to start doing that shit. Also, it's a good way to like, it would be also a great way with the clips. So instead, mental and water, maybe? Tears? And yeah, it's mercury, but who gives a shit? Okay. Uh, mental or water? It's not mental, it's mind. Uh, mind or earth, mind or water, mind or water, then the third one is what? Is what I hope Angel looks like again. They do sound stuff. Sound stuff is air, so mind or air? Here we go. "I am under the water, please save me." "Please save me, I am under the water." Should I go even more chaotic? Yes, I should. So yeah. Uh, we allow to deal your damage as mind, mind or earth, mind or water, mind or air. Yeah, makes sense. Because it's literally thunder, right? Yeah, it's hope and thunder. And hope is also mind. So... Because hope is also mind. Yeah, so yeah. Each of them do mind or hope or something, yeah. Uh, highest attribute. Viva, you are so great, I'm definitely happy to have found your streams. Oh my fucking god! Thank you! Uh, sorry, I'm vaming way too hard to that music. Um... Thank you. Um, by the way, Ruby Session is on Saturday. Staring! At you and Nari go through the computer staring! Since I have you here. I'm putting double duty, no! Uh, so can you make, Nari is indeed offered. Okay, but are, are you available? If you do double duty, will you, will you be available? Uh, I mean, I have two sessions. Oh! Okay, good, I thought you had twice the amount of work. Oh, I was scared. I was like, "No!" Okay, good, good. That's a good kind of, that's a, that's a good double duty. That's good double duty. Why? Uh, we are taking it to the doctor at 1pm, but we, if, if we are late, uh, it shouldn't be too much. Uh, if it's for the doctor, of course, like, of course. Do what needs to be done to take care of the Nari. Of course. I hope she's, I hope she's going to do better, because it sounds like she is just going through, like, uh, a lot of like health, uh, health issues. So I hope it's going better. I hope it, I mean, I hope they're going to be gone, but I don't know, because some of it is chronic. If I, if I remember correctly, but I, I just, you know, hope for the best, you know? She's got a burn that needs, uh, looked at this, yeah, she said it, yeah. Uh, it's, uh, a weth. Yeah, she said, yeah, she had a burn that was quite severe. So, yeah, I hope it can actually like, you fix it, but because that's, that's, you know. Pain, needless pain. Um... Hmm... Yeah, it's like a third degree. Oh my god, what did she do? Did she go attack when she was cooking? Or like, how did it happen? Get it taken care of. We think she got burned. Oh, fry oil, ooh, yeah, that's nasty. Like, oil burns are very nasty. I mean, that's the reason why you're used in war. Um... Oh no. No! We know it. No! Uh, to deal bonus damage. I would say bonus damage, yeah, to deal, um... To deal, uh, your highest... Your highest, uh, attribute. Because it's level eight, so you need to be good. Your highest attribute mode, um... To modify, uh, uh, to deal your highest modifier... Your highest attribute mode as my, uh, distribute, uh... Oh my god, words! I need to think and talk at the same time and it's not working. Uh, I'm glad you live. You. Uh... Uh, will allow you to deal, will allow you, will allow... Yeah, blah blah blah. What do you mean? We're like, oh yeah, for with the burn. Um, will allow you to deal your highest attribute mode... Uh, as mind, uh, attribute mode as mind or earth, uh, bonus damage? Which means we basically get double bonus. Uh, mind or water, uh, as, uh, mind or earth, mind or water, mind or air? That's good. Watery grave, um... Uh, you get plus 10 to your skill, it was, uh... It has plus 15 with the... Outfits. Yeah, whatever. It's a level seven. Uh... Skill rules, yeah. Your exorcist, inquisitor and confessor. Exorcist, inquisitor and confessor. So you can play a good cop, bad cop or straight up cop? So... Um, Eldritch. What does that, that means that, for example... Uh, let's say your level... Let's say, like, your highest attribute is body, so when you shift your weapon, it would add three damage straight up. It had, it allows you to add three damage straight up at level, um... Yeah, your current weapons, your current weapon, um... Your current, your VC rent. Your preggnat. Your pregente. Your pregente. Your preggnat. Your pregert. Uh... Uh... Uh, your Luigi board. Your Luigi board. Uh, it's the same brain cell! What to be preferred, let me freak me out, okay? Ooh, and be pregente! What was this thing? Um... Uh, can U be, uh, pregert? Will it, will it give me, uh, will give, will it give me, uh, starch marks? How do you uncurse a Luigi board? Do I need to ask a witch or vegan? I mean, there is a high chance of them being both that. Depending on where you live. Pregnant autocorrect changed it. I was trying to spell it wrong as, as in preggnat! Pre... Uh, oh my god! And again, thank you everyone for being here. They probably appreciate it. Uh... Dude, as soon as, dude, if, when Fawkes finish my model, I'm scared. I mean, technically, I want to commission her to have like both of our mermaid model together, because I'm gonna be like mermodels, I guess, because I'm gonna be merman and she has a mermaid model. And I, I kinda want to be like, "That's too good of a thematic." That's too good of a thematic, so I want, I want us both like to have like a nice, you know... A nice artwork together. Because she's great. No such thing as too good. No, I'm too, I'm scared, because she, she, she... My daughter refused to have kids, so she had a tube style. My daughter refused to have kids, so she had a tube style. Because it's the only body modification she doesn't want. What? Oh, so, oh no, because you can't reverse it after a while. Oh yeah, by the way, uh, men, if you do that as well, uh... There's never end of Beaver. Oh my god. Oh no, I mean, yeah, that's why you need to be careful, you know, when you make decisions like that. Because it's the same with dudes, as far as I know, if you do the operation... Uh, if you do, wait, vasectomy, uh, you can reverse a vasectomy after, like, um... You can reverse a vasectomy, I believe, uh, one or two, I believe, in, you can do it, um... You have around a fifty fifty percent chance after, like, um... You have a fifty fifty percent chance after four months. Uh, and that depends how fast your body heals. Uh, but after four months, you're fucked. Like, you can't have kids anymore, after four months. Like, the chances of them being able to revert it are very, very small. It's like, it goes from, like, um, I think the couple of, the first couple of months, like, seventy percent chance, like, seven to eighty percent chance of them being able to do it. Because it hasn't healed yet, so you can, like, do it back. Um... After two months, that's, after two months, that's pretty much like seven to eighty percent. After, after four months... Of the time goes quickly, I mean, of course, uh, 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 it will still, uh, it will, yeah, with, yeah. Uh, and after four months, you pretty much have, like, almost, like, no chance of reverting it. So any dude that did, like, um... Because there was, like, a craze about vasectomies for, like, mostly left-leaning dudes. For, like, political statements about, like, I believe it was Roe v. Wade. I don't have an opinion on it, it's American politics, it's none of my business. It's American politics, deal with it as you want. None of my business. I repeat, none of my fucking business. Uh, even less on stream. Because that's not why I stream. But, um, there was a bunch of dude that had the craze of doing vasectomies. It was pretty much like performative, like, it was like, because the doctor says you can reverse it. They never say for long. Here's the crux, they, they say it can be reversed, yes. If you do it in the first four months. After that, you're fucked. I mean, no, you aren't fucked, actually. You're shooting blanks, bro. After four months, you're shooting blanks. And again, some people do it because they already have plenty of kids. And they don't trust themselves, which I know a couple of persons that have done that. Then the sixties, by the way. I don't even, I think it happened right before he found out that he had lung cancer. Wow. After vasectomy, what? I guess some can slip through, I guess. Yeah, because it's just same, I believe, I mean, it could go through, yeah. I mean, it's, it's... I mean, in the end... In the end, I'm just going to say it. People can take it all they want to, your body is made a specific way. Is it a perfect work? No, it's not. All of us have issues, all of us, none of us have been made from, like, a perfect mold. That's, yeah, they were, yeah, that's what I thought. Um... Yeah, whoa, that's, wow. The stuff, lung cancer, oh shit. Yeah. I mean, I hope, I don't want to ask, I don't want to, like... Uh, yeah. I don't want to ask, because I don't want, like, to, yeah, bring, bring up sad stuff. Um, this is such objective of the stream. So... The... Yeah, chances are never zero, that is absolutely true. That's why it's important to know if there's a chance, there's a chance. That's why sometimes taking the plunge is worth it. Absolutely. Because, you know the expression, "Life will find a way"? Life finds a way. It will always find a way. No matter if it's microscopic, no matter if it's gigantic, no matter if it's a plant, no matter if it's like a unicellular being, life will find a way. Oh no. Uh, all my, I, I know it has been probably like a while, but all my condolences, dude. Condolences, sorry. Uh, all my condolences, dude, um... Yeah. Uh, I mean, lung cancer, I mean, my grandpa also, my grandpa died of lung cancer as well, so... I understand. I mean, I was very young when it happened, I mean, I was like, not very young, like... Yeah, all my condolences, uh, may rest in peace. Um... And, uh... It's, you know, and again, um, cancer is, is painful. It's painful for everyone involved, you know? Uh, yeah, it's, you know... Let's say it's, like... I saw my grandpa going through cancer when I was, it started when I was eleven. He lived, I believe, he died when I was fourteen. So it was four years of seeing him, you know? Three, it was, it was, it was, uh... It was the year I was in, yeah, fourteen? Yeah, fourteen, something like that. Thirteen, fourteen? So it was like a couple, couple of few years, I just remember. No, eleven, ten, eleven, so three, four years of him, seeing him, like, go through it. Yeah. And I have the same, you know? No, that's one of the things that I, I, I told, I think I told LD, but I have, um... My grandfather has one of the best, like, uh, core memory for me. Because he showed me a book that he has, that was very personal. I fought with my aunt, like, for years. Like, pushing and pushing to get that book back. Um, and we did. My, my parents have it. I don't remember. It was so long ago. Uh, I think it was in high school, when, when, uh, when we lost him. Um, and he, and sorry, people in the chat, I know, merry subject, but you know, it's just, I'm just being honest here. I'm just being honest here, you know, I don't want to, like, shy away from the subjects, because that's part of our life. That's part of our lives, that's just, that's what it is, you know? And I, I don't want the emotions to be fake. You know, I don't want, like, the experience of people here in the chat to be fake or to be something else. I know that some people from, you know... Uh, it's just that some people, for some reason, no, it's their chat, it's their stream, they undo it all they want. They want it to be positive and only positive. It's their way of handling stuff, it's their way of doing it. It's probably the best way, when it looks at, like, numbers and shit. But that's not, that's simply not how I do it. So again... That is not trauma dumping. That's just, that's just what we went through. Uh, and again, um, and that's why I tried to go back to the positives, because that's what we should remember from them. Um, and when I was nine years old, my grandfather, the same, um, took me by the hand and guided me to, like, his study. As always, there was two rooms, when everyone else was forbidden to enter. One was the kitchen, when he was cooking, because yes, he was a cook. My dad, my granddad loved to cook. Um, and one, the other one was his study. These are the two rooms that no one else could go. My grandmother, his kids, no one else. It was those places where, because he hated. My granddad hated conflict. He hated conflict, I know, that's very different for me, right? But my grandfather hated conflict, he hated fighting, arguing. If some shit happened, he would much rather, like, okay, what is the problem? And he would literally fix it silently. And then he was like, I did it, it's done, stop talking about it. You know, that's just the way he did with this, with things. He was very much like a non-conflict, uh, person. That doesn't mean he would not, like... Which means that when he decided to literally, like, literally step, put, put his foot down, it meant that the foot was down. And you shut up. And then he would explain to you why, but he was, he would not leave you a choice, because if he's ready to go, like, into a, an argument... That means that he believes that... It means that for him, every, every other option was already, like, the worst choices. So if he would say, "Do it that way", it means, "I ran everything through, I, I, I thought about everything... And I think this is the best way you could do it. Trust me with this." That's literally the way he would do things. When he would actually talk, because he was not a very talkative guy. And when I, it's kind of special, because my grandfather also, like, he also was very tall, he was like one meter eighty-seven, when he was like seventy. So he was very tall as well, uh... My, um... The fucking song, it's the back. Uh, haha, haha, oh my god, the tonal whiplash between me and the song. Uh, haha, and so the... He brought me to his study and he showed me a book, and that book, as I said, we still have it today. It's a book that is no longer published today. It's a compilation of all the, um, the newspapers, of all of the newspapers from a newspaper called Le Petit Journal. And it's a compilation of all of them from World War I and World War II. You just book. Like, you can, you can legitimately, like, you can literally, like, put it on a stick and, like, whack someone to death with it. That book is a mace if you put it at the end of a stick. Like, that book is, like, hefty. Like, hefty, leather-bound, fancy as fuck. Sadly, the cover of the book, like, the, the rind, I think of the book, is it how you call it? Uh, the spine, the spine of the book is cracked today, because my aunt did not take care of it, and she used, pretty much used, like, the, um... They turned his study into, like, an extension of the attic to store more stuff. It's a mess in there. Oh, in that case, back, for some reason. Uh, okay. And, um, he, he, he put, he, he, like, he, he had a beautiful Napoleon-style desk. They sold it, because it's a very, no, it's a difficult desk to, like... You know, where the fuck do you put that in your home, in your house? Uh, haha. He had, like, I believe, a Napoleon III-style desk, beautiful desk. Uh, and he put the book out, and that book is unique. It is unique, because he put in there all of his account. He pretty much centralized all of the accounts of the family, from their own, like, uh, lived experience, through, like, the two world wars. From their memories, uh, pictures, photographs, um, all of the letters he received when he was, uh, from people at the front, from the family. And pretty much, it's, it's the living memory of my family, like, on my mother's side, during two world wars. From their account, it's them, it's their voices. You know, it's their pictures, it's their voices, it's their handwriting. It's their tragedies, their victories. It's a direct link with almost two hundred years, like, no, hundred years of, like... For a hundred years of, of my family, you know? In multiple generations from their own, with their own words. And you can share it in my voice, but that, that's a core memory, because my grandfather learned that I was more interested in books about, like, animals. You know, like, um, old biology books, when they have, like, um, drawings of the animals, like, very detailed. You know, drawing of the animals, um, explaining, like, the families of animals, you know, like, pretty much a biology book, like an old-school biology book, or zoology, I guess. And I was more interested in, like, historical books, like, museum books with, like, pictures and explanations, uh, and, um... And zoology book than, you know, kids' book. I like comics, because my dad also, like, liked comics, I like comics, like French comics. Like Franco-Belgian, uh, bon descine, I like them, um, I like them as well, but it's just, you know, that's just what I gravitated, gravitated towards, like, very early on. Like, the first book I ever remember was literally, like, um... Uh, Mythology, it's, it's named Mythology and Religion of the World, uh, and it's literally like a book, like, explaining, like, the Greek, uh, Greek myth, Egyptian myth. It's a big book. And it has pictures from the museum in Cairo, it had pictures from museums all over the planet, of, like, uh, different, like, um, artifacts, uh, paintings, uh, pictures of Luxor. Um... The one thing I always remember is the face of Akhenaten. I saw it in person, in Cairo, when I was, like, eleven or twelve, and I was nerding out so hard. Um, because there was, like, this bust of Akhenaten, and I remember, like, the same picture was in the book, and I remember it, because I saw it in person, I was like, wow, it's the same as a book! That's amazing! Um, ah... So I'm very glad I got to meet him, because, um, without him, I don't think I would be as passionate about history. I would have been, I think, uh, but not, it would not matter as much to me. So yeah. Uh, cherish what you have and, uh, remember the good about what, about what you went through with them. Uh, their teachings, uh, what they try to impart on you. It could be bad, it could be good as well, you know? In the end, a life is everything. Sadly... Some people go through bad things only, uh, when it comes to members of the family, and it's sad. Uh, it's just, you know, cherish the memories you have when they're good, or the memories that are important to you, uh, to go through shit. Because those are the lights, the candles that you hold in the darkest times, in my opinion. As far as I know, that's what went with me, you know? So yeah. And I'll be finished, it's this, um, that I finish all of this talk. Sorry if it makes very serious, sorry if it was very serious, it just, I don't want to... I want to handle this with the care and with the, the tone, with the care, the tone and the honesty that I think it deserves. So, uh, pour one ass to those we lost, and for them, let's move forward. Let's move forward and let's, uh, achieve what we can during our lives, as much as we can. Either to spite those that do not believe in us, or to honor those that did. Huzzah, or something. So let's move on, I'm trying to make a game here. And again, sorry if it was a little bit too heavy, uh, it's just, I just thought it was the proper way to do it. Uh, sorry if it was too heavy. Um, I hope it's not too bad. I hope it's not too bad, uh... Ah shit, I'm tearing up a bit, uh... Okay, uh... Ah, fuck, I'm a bitch, uh, phew. Okay. That's done, that's done. And again, thank you all for thinking through this, sorry if it was a bit heavy. I hope you did not mind it. Mind it, mind it, oh my god, can't even speak, what the heck? Uh, again, uh, so, I think that's a good bonus. Uh, no, 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 it's a level eight, though. Hmm... Should we get one additional attack action? Should we get an additional attack action, yeah, something like that? I hope everyone is fine after, I swear, I'm getting very conscious about it now, um... So I hope everything is fine, uh, I hope I did not scare you away, uh, with the seriousness. I know it's not what you commit for, for streams, but that's what I, that's what I do, I guess. Uh, yeah, so I think it should be, no, 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 no. Uh, then, uh, which is a player, uh, when empowered... You can, you get, uh, you get one... One, uh, bonus attack action. Uh, we get one bonus attack action. Uh, by the way, that shit should also work with the, um... With the engine in the cage. Dude, everyone is silent, I'm getting... Is it good? Sorry, I'm getting nervous. No one is saying anything. I'm getting nervous now, because of what I did. Uh, because of what I said, I'm getting a bit nervous. Because of what I said, I'm getting a bit nervous. Um. Hmm. Uh, you get one bonus attack action. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay. So you weren't there. Uh, nothing. It was very serious. Sorry about that. Um. Um, I can't really go through it again. Yeah, it was serious. I was saying like serious shit. Uh, I, I can't really go through it again. I can't really repeat it. Uh, I just said like some serious stuff. That's what it is. Uh. So, okay. Nothing bad, nothing bad. It was just, you know. A bit of a tonal shift. A bit of a tonal shift compared to the, um, normal silliness. Um. It just knew serious subjects need to be. It says that serious subjects needs to be, uh, approached in a serious tone. And that's pretty much what I did. With I hope as much, uh, respect. With as much respect and, um. With as much respect as I thought I did. Uh, so. Uh, so duration. Uh, Dakar, I know you're, I know you're somewhat here, but I don't know because you're working. Oh my god, no! Thank you. Yes, I can't, I can't like laugh, like I can't laugh off those subjects. I can't redo it. So, you know. I can't redo it. I just, it's just not how I work. You know, that's just not how I work. So I would rather like address it and move on. Uh. Yeah. Uh, so one bonus attack action, how long should it last? I believe the maximum, um. No, that's just, it's just, you know. I'm always scared, uh, totally deserve, oh my god, shut up, shut up. It's. How do I say this? It's simply that, um. How do I say this? It's simply that, um, when there is serious subjects like that, that are being like brought up in chat. On stream. It's always scary because often like a lot of people leave. So you lose a lot of audience. Uh, you, you have a risk of losing a lot of audience, but I still wanted to address it because I think it's important. So that's why I did. So, you know. I was a bit scared of like losing everyone by doing that. Mm, 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 mm. Oh my god, stop it. Uh, I'm going. Okay, so. Yep, some people left, but as for, I don't know, whatever. Yeah, a couple of you left. I don't know. I want to break free! Oh my god, my voice! I want to break free! Uh. My voice went, "Ugh!", when I did it. Oh, eh, yeah. Okay. I tried too hard. And went too far, but in the end, I fucked up my voice a bit. Dude, I fucked up my voice, it's too late. I will not do it again. Uh, you know, you know that, uh, at least a few fans that are. Here for whatever you, oh my god! I want to ride my bicycle, I, I want to ride my bike. Your meat bicycle or just a normal bicycle? Ah, I don't know much about Queen. I know a couple of songs, but not all of them, so. Did now. So how many turns should that one last? Because I believe, okay, let's do an experiment. If I put it to level ten. So we have la- nine life, nine time. So that's five every time. That's ten. You can put. One of them is a ten, so if I put. Uh. Uh, that's ten, 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 ten. So if I do. Hmm, let me look at the character just to make sure I don't do this stupid. Yes, that's what by five. Was that two attribute points, same attribute, yes. So the maximum should be. Fat bottom girls, ha, ha, ha! Uh, so nine times five is forty-five? S- yeah, but you can't. Because it's nine. What does that work again? I don't remember. Okay, it's by five, yes, it's by five. So nine times five would be forty-five, but you can't. Because every time it's fifty. Ten. Okay. Because it's, um, if every level you get to ten and you get to five. Get to ten and the five, every three levels, right? You get attribute only every three levels, right? Yes. Yes. So. Uh, that's. Because if I do like. Five, then it will be eight, right? Yes. So if I do fifty. That's five, okay, so more. It's seventy-five max, right? Yes. That's what? But that's if I put every single, no, it's ten and the five. What? Yeah. Eh. What the heck? Okay, because, no, because it's every three level. Okay, because if it's like five. This is ten and five, right? I'm not using my shit, right? As a future player of D and D, how many, how many of each die should I have? All of them? Depends on your DM. Uh, you, I mean, at least one of each. I would say. But it depends if you want to do it physically or if it's virtual. If it's virtual, the, the software already has it. If it's physical, then you need one of each, I think. There is boxes, uh, you can buy with all of one. With each dice. There is pre-made boxes. I am so, I'm no longer so hungry, I'd eat your ankles again. Why my ankles? Ah, because you're short, that's why. Ankle biter. And, uh, and, uh. We have reached a level, they've reached a level of friendship with Eldies and we actually start to threaten each other. It's, 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 we have, it's like levels of gremlinning. Every time. Each point is a five, yes. Oh. He, he. Of course, he, he, you. Again, thirty points, each point increases the boost by five, yes. So no, it's. Yeah, it's because. Yeah. What? Okay, so if I do this, that would be. Ten. So we have some, okay. God, I'm so dumb. I don't remember to level up characters. I mean, no, because that was the way we used to, so. So it's ten at level three. It's okay. So it's ten at level three, so it's forty. Uh. Uh, ten at level six, so it's fifty. Uh, uh, ten at level nine. Yeah. Apascal! I don't feeling of Beaver on Beaver. Fast, that's what I've been like, what kind of sauce is that? I'm curious. Me mahogany. It's a story. So it's, uh, how do I, bleh, 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 thinking. Bleh, thinking. Uh, I make some of you, I need, um, apascal! So it's, yeah, it's ten. It's because they're level, okay. They're level two. So at three, you'll be forty. At six, it would be fifty. At nine, it would be, it would be, s- yeah. If we s- yeah. Yeah, level three, forty. Six, fi- uh, six, uh, fifty. Um, six, seven, eight, yeah, nine, sixty. So max should be sixty. That's a sixty max. So I have sixty max stats. Because you can only upgrade it. Yeah, that's sixty, right? I'm not dumb. Because you can only level up to level ten and you can only spend, uh, ten and five. So if you put all of your tens in, in one stat. And you would start with the maximum amount, which is. Uh, I made it with tomato sauce, took myself, all the good, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so good tomato sauce. Actually, I need to do some tomatoes. I have some tomato I need to cut up and do into a sauce. Uh, Dakar don't like tomatoes. It's weird. Yeah, I see that as a motherfucker, I can't eat garlic. Uh, ha, 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 ha. Yo ho! Uh. I can't eat garlic, I can't eat onion. Unless onion is cooked, cooked so much it's become liquid. And, 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 ha, 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 ha! That's funny. That is funny. Can I say something funny? And just, 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 and just take it as funny, because that's the intention. Oh, it's a character. Okay. Um. I see people post flags about like their gender and stuff. Um. How do I say that? Uh, ha, 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 ha. Um, and people keep posting their flags and stuff about like what they are as genders and like sexuality. And I know none of them. I just, I just, I'm just nodding in the corner, going like, mm-hmm, good for you. I was supposed to use the tomato sauce for my work meal, my daughter edit on instead. Oh, that's, that's, that's a good sign. You know what, you know what, what you can eat now? That's a good sign. Like, yo ho! I, I don't know them. I don't know them. And I keep looking at them like on Twitter, like in blue sky, and I'm like, uh-huh. And again. I don't say that to be an ass, okay? I don't say that to be an asshole, I just don't know them and I don't have, I don't have the bandwidth. I don't have a flag. Is there a flag for straight people? Oh yeah, it's a boring one. It's a depression one. It's the one that looks like depression. You want to know why? I don't really know what flags are with, yeah, I don't know. You want to know what the straight flag is? I saw it once and I'm like, okay, that sounds like a jab. That looks like straight up a jab. Yeah. No, it's like, it's literally that. It's the most boring one ever. But the straight ally and straight flag, I hate the word ally. But there's another one, there's two of them. How many are they? Oh, the super straight. I, I know that one. That was kind of funny, not gonna lie. What the fuck? Okay. Uh, just with everyone's respect, I don't care. Yeah, 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 yeah. No, I, I don't, yeah, yeah, absolutely. When I saw it, I literally said like, hey, it looks like the flag of Brittany. I said it literally, no, Brittany flag. You know, I, I, when I saw it, I said, hey, can it look like a lamer version of Brittany? Because I said, I don't have, I don't have, as I said, like, I. Yeah, no problem. Uh, you know, and I say that, I say it because I don't really give a shit. So it's like, it's like a lamer one because the, that one has just meaning. Wait, that sounds bad. Uh. I mean, yeah. Absolutely. Uh, my original flag is that one. Uh, that's my original flag. It's that one. I suppose with the Flemish movement, I don't know, is it a movement? Let me do French Flanders. Just to be sure. French Flanders. Yeah, that's the same, right? That's the, that's the Flemish flag. That's the one of my home region. Uh, that, yeah, that's the one that I know, this one. Nohpatkale, yeah. That's, that's my flag. That's the one of my home, uh, home region and technically my ethnicity. That is one of my, uh, we are the black, the black lions. That's not the one I wanted. This one. That's it is, uh, how the flag of my region looks like. And, uh, and also there's a town flag of Dunkirk. Why is there a Nazi flag? What the fuck? That's the flag of Dunkirk. Uh... That's the flag of Dunkirk. Dunkirk Jack. But where's the other one? There was another one. What the heck? Uh, is that the flag of Dunkirk, which is a flag of my hometown? Oh, but when I went to... Uh, flag of Dunkirk, uh, Dunkirk. I'm going to Google. That would have better shit. Uh, Dunkirk. Uh, flag. That's, that's a, that's a boring one, that the politicians like because it's boring. Uh, that's the f- flag of Dunkirk. Uh, that's the second flag of Dunkirk. There's also the coat of arms of Dunkirk. Uh, that's the coat of arms of Dunkirk. Um, the coat of flag, the coat of arms of Dunkirk is actually the, um, the four medals that were given to Dunkirk in the two world wars. Which is, um, that's the four medals given to Dunkirk as a heroic quote-unquote city. And, um... Uh... It literally means, uh, Dunkirk a bien mérité de la patrie. Uh, which is like, um, uh, Dunkirk has well deserved. That's the date of foundation of Dunkirk, which is, um, seventeen ninety-three. No, it's not! That's the French Revolution. Seventeen ninety-three, that's, yeah. That's when these, the coat of arms are decided. Um... It is heroic town. Uh, uh, a bien, okay. Uh, Dunkirk has well deserved, uh, from the, um, from the country, from the nation, uh, to be considered, um, an heroic town that serves as an example for the nation. So pretty much Dunkirk rocks us because we got wrecked in World Wars and fought to the, to the nail. The symbol of the sea knight, which is a knight with a falchion, is a reference to the savior of the city, which is Jeanne Barre. Uh, Jeanne Barre is that brotherfucker? That unit of a man? Uh, that's, uh, oh my god, that's some memories. That's, uh, Jeanne Barre when he was, uh, old and fat, because he had a lot of money at the end. Um, that's the, uh, statue of Dunk- of, uh, of Jeanne Barre. And the center of the town of Dunkirk. Uh, that's, uh, oh, he was when he was young. And yes, he used, like, that's pretty much him, like loading back his gun. Like waiting for a cannon because he has like the, um, the alimash. The, um, how do you say it in English? The firestarter in his mouth. So it's pretty much like showing him... And that's the, the older flag of Dunkirk. Um, which he was the one with the kingly symbols because it was during the time when we had a king in France. And the... That's kind of funny. Because that's from the museum of Dunkirk, so... And the fun fact is that, um, uh, Jeanne Barre was a commoner. Uh, Jeanne Barre was a, the son of a fisherman, slash corsair, that, um, at the age of, I believe, twelve, uh, enrolled into a quote-unquote corsair ship, quote-unquote pirate, uh, fishing ship, uh, during the wars against the Netherlands. He was, because there is a specific kind of pirates, uh, that is called the Dunkirkers. Uh, Dunkirkers was the pirates specifically for the tom- for the town of Dunkirk that would, uh, raid, uh, the most of the, the English, uh, mostly the English and the Dutch during the war. Um... Uh, Jeanne Barre illustrated himself as being very clever and as being very resourceful. And when the town of Dunkirk was besieged by the British, if I remember right, or the Dutch or both, or the Spanish, everyone was in the war. Welcome to Europe. Um... The, uh, Jeanne Barre managed to slip, to like slip past through the blockade and to go into the town with hu- with one ship, with the hull full of food and save the city of Dunkirk from starvation. And he organized the efforts to retake the city and to break the blockade. He was awarded, um, a, a rank of nobleman. So he went from the son of a fisherman, uh, to a nobleman, and then he became a, a knight. The rank of knight in the nobility, and his nickname was the, the Knight of the Sea. Um, it was actually, um, fun fact. It was actu- fun fact, it was actually, um... A fun fact, he was actually like hated at the court of Louis XIV. Uh, because he was, he had a sailor's tongue and he kept saying the truth, instead of what the king wanted to hear. But the thing is that the king deeply valued dishonesty, because the Parisian court at the time in Versailles was a nest of vipers. So having someone, someone actually tell you what he thinks straight up was very refreshing. As you can imagine. There's a knight, a knight, a broken knight. Oh, 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 oh. Dark is bright, broken knight. Na 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 na, there is a pain. I think, uh, the death of God, na 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 na, don't say no. Sorry. The music was too good. Uh, what was I doing? Oh yeah, I was, I was working at that. How many turns should it be? Yeah, I was doing the math about it. So the max at level ten should be six turns? Which is a lot. Probably half your highest attributes mode? Because that's a lot. That one, one bonus action and a lot of more damage, so... Bright, broken knight. I think it's a pain. Broken knight, duh 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 na 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 na. Is that the level... Five? No. That's a level eight. Okay. Should I... Hmm, I don't know. Dakka! Outest thou here! Okay, good, you're alive. Um... I have a question. Your part. I have a question. Uh, because I don't know, because I think the duration should be half your highest attribute. Because the max you can get at level ten is six. Sixty is the highest, uh, it's the highest, um, attribute you can get. Because when, because again, I did the math. That's with putting the first ten you get at level, um, no, your, your... Uh, two. Um... Because putting the max amount that you can get with your level ups, uh, because you get, um, you are level two, so you get one at level, you get, uh, one at level three, so it's thirty, one at level six. It's, yeah, it's every three, right? Um... Sorry, I was hoping guess with, wha- what is the ability? Uh, no, I was thinking about like, no, it's not a question of abilities, it's your highest attribute modifier. So... When you level up, you can only get thirty ma- like, uh, you can only get, like, when you look at the level up guide. Get one attribute increase here, one there, so that's, um... So you go to thirty, from thirty... Forty. Uh, forty, fifty. Fifty, sixty. And that's it. Sixty is the max. Uh, sixty is the max attribute you can get. Like the, yeah. Sixty is the mass attribute you can get, because if you go to, um... Because if I go to like level, level ten, and I put to sixty, I have three left, which means three is, um, fifteen. And fifteen makes sense because fifteen is the half of thirty, which means that my math is right. So yeah, sixty should be the max, yes. And level two. Thirty. Ah, I am right! So... The max amount of turns you can get an ability with your highest, if your highest attribute modifier was the number of turns you can use that ability, would be six. So either you can go all out... Mm, 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 mm. Either you can go all out... Yeah. How is this last for... For a number of turns, uh, equal to half your highest... It's a level eight though. I'd, yeah. Hmm, no, that's too strong. That's too strong, that's a lot of damage. Uh... Number of turn equal to half your highest attribute modifier. So should it also give you advantage on attacks if it's only three turn axe? That's a lot though. That's three attack with... Okay, because let's say... Um... Um... Yeah, yeah. So the real question is... The real question becomes... Hmm... 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 Uh, ba 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 ba. We cannot create a second doll, this doll you can... Fusion, yeah. Okay. So, will plus despair. Plus, uh, despair. Uh, one more action with the big one. Because then that's three, and that's good. Because if not, that's too much. Uh, new ability. New action. Uh, will plus despair. Uh... Uh... What's... Uh, hypersonic whale? Uh, will plus despair? Can I even do that? Yeah. I guess. Oh, well, shit, rumbo. The beast, na 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 na, oh. Hey, oh. Hey, rumbo. So again, sorry everyone, uh, I'm trying to focus on, on finishing the stuff. I hope you all have a great time. And, uh, again, I'm, I know you're doing your own shit, sorry. Um... I know you're doing your own shit, I have to tell you about that. But, uh, lean down. Uh, LD, you have your, you have your DNDs, you have your DNDs this Friday, right? It's this Friday, right? Uh, yeah, because... Was it? I don't remember. I go. Need a link. And, 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 uh, da 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 da. Da 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 da. See you at the scene. Oh. If they saw. Uh, ba 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 ba. Wag! Troll. Wag! Troll wag. Uh... Three, four, five, six, seven, okay, cool. Do, you, but, ju- 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 just three. Uh, ba 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 ba, a sonic whale. Uh, you, you do have, you have your DNDs this Friday, right? Um, your DND, uh, session is on Friday, right? It's tomorrow, right? Um... Yes, okay. Because last week we did Baldur's Gate. Okay. No, just trying to like... Because I'm also thinking about like a ruby. About a ruby birthday stream tomorrow. Actually, you need to check as I think. Oh, okay. I mean, if it's, if it's, um... If it's cancelled, we can play Baldur's Gate. If it's not, then meh. A DND again. This is a DND, leave behind. I'm joking. Have fun anyway. Um... Uh... Oh wag, oh. Wag! Because if I sh- if I remove... If I, because if I remove, hmm... Ooh. I need to check the numbers. I need to, I need to check the numbers. Na 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 na. Uh... Hypersonic. Wait, hmm... 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 Ooh, I have a cool idea. I actually have a cool idea. Uh, wheel... Plus hope. Antenna, eh, antenna of that. How long should it last? How long should it last? That's, what is the problem? That one should definitely be... Uh, all allies. Uh, it was, yes, it was cancelled. Oh, but still can play Baldur's Gate. If you want to. If you want to! Yeah, we can, because I was just thinking about it. I was like, wait, because, uh, again, it's new, so I'll try to keep track of it. And now I shall put sparkling water into my juice to make a better shit. Okay, sugar-free soda. Sugar-free soda with a tiniest bottom. It's a way for me to drink more water. It's a way for me to drink more water without any need for sugar. Na 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 na. Uh, I'm starting the torture of the gentleman. Ha 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 ha! I do sparkling juice is better. Actually, one of the most, one that I like the most is actually sparkling grape juice. There is a variant of grape juice that is sparkling grape juice, and it's way better than any grape soda. And it do- and it doesn't rot your teeth. And it doesn't give you the jitters. And it tastes better. I'm not a fan of soda. Soda is too much fucking sugar. It's just, it's like, "Oh, it tastes good." No, you just like sugar, you're addicted. It's like, it's like having your drug addiction, like, mm, I sure love crack cocaine, frittering away. I mean, it's less, but it's, it's a more common addiction actually, for people. It's not good! Too much sugar is not good! You're wrecking your nervous system. You're wrecking your, your brain, you're wrecking everything. I don't know it! I don't know it! Is ever see uh the uh... Uh, all allies in, in... Twice your highest attribute should be 12. This will be 12. This should be 12. Uh, all allies in range 12 have um... They have the, the negative conditions. Uh, put... Uh, have the negative conti- which is they have... Uh, have the negative, they, they have been inflicted by. Eldritch, like gentlemen will regret knowing me! I'm waiting for the what the fuck beaver! Sangria. I mean Sangria has alcohol. Because Sangria is not, is just, yeah, Sangria is, is alcoholic. I mean, you're gonna get a lot of money. So... You're gonna get a lot of money. I think I'm giving you... He said literally, "Okay!" Crazy motherfucker! What the fuck? Are we all insane? Is that the secret of my community? I make it and it becomes alcoholic, like... Oh! Wait, does that mean I'm employing my baron community to do shit? Yes, I am! Not as strong as the stuff from the stock of... Yeah, because wine you make from home. The thing with wine is that it takes time. Alcohol takes a lot of time to mature. So if you want it to be strong... It's, you know, that's why beer is, is what people like make, because beer matures fast. Um, that's why it's difficult to like, um... Because I know some people that made their own wine. It was um... Often it turned sparkly, because that's just part of the process of fermentation. Um... Okay, let me check about how much it's gonna be. Because it does 3 at a time. Is that right? This is 13 bucks, 13 bucks for... Up to 3, 60 seconds, okay. So, uh... It's... How much is it? Is it like, uh, so it's 120 divided... Uh, divided by 3. That's 40, okay. So it'd be 40 time... So it will be 40 time... 18. I can actually do that! Um, up to 3, 60 second clips, yeah. Okay, sound design, subtitles, 1 minute running time. A color grading. Standards, it's, okay, 4 minutes. Maybe that's a video. That's not what I need. Sound design and mixing, motion graphics, okay. Um, I can't believe I'm literally doing that shit. Wait. Ask, is guessing... What? What the fuck? Uh... Okay, whatever. So if I do that, so it's 5, okay. Yep, so um, Arabis is employed! There we go! There we go, fucking progress finally! Fuck yeah! Finally! I don't have to deal with those clips anymore! Okay, um, sounds like Yabo is going to do some social medias. Yabo is going to do some social medias, because if he does that shit and I can get them, I can go... I can literally post a flow of clips. For like, at least half a year. That's going to be a very profitable relationship for me. Because I don't have to edit and waste my time. And think about it. Because it sucks, I hate it. I hate editing, I don't want to do it. Um, and I have money, so I'm going to use it. Uh... And I have money, I'm going to fucking use it. Oh yeah? Uh, haha! Uh... So yeah. Hahaha! Oh my god, that's fucking insane! But I love it! Ah, I love the crazy shit! Ah, this is great! Can anyone download clips? I don't really care. If you have to like, rea- rea- like... If you have to raid it them, I don't care. NPC is also found. Hey, zero copyright strike on my channel! Okay. So! Good day! Uh, ba 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 ba. How are you doing? Sorry, it was a little bit of a business aperté. Um... I'm going to stream 5 hours before we be done. I don't know, yeah. Uh, opposite, you can, ba 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 ba, maybe 5 or 6, I don't know. Do I have more shit to do? Yes. Do I have the brain cells to do them? Questionable. What time is it? Oh, it's 1. Uh! Is it fucking musette? Oh, it took enough time, that's why it sounds like that. Here you go. Ho, ho, lan ho. Ho, ho, ho. Ho, lan ho. Here you go. Yes, Panama! Oh fuck! Lo... Eh oh! Ho, ho, lan ho. Uh, so again, everyone, thank, uh, I thank thee for being here. Uh... I mean, yeah. If you're, yeah. I agree, if you have to pay the fee, yes. Haha! Lan ho, lan ho! Um, so! And this is the negative... Uh, of the... Negative condition stacks. Subjective themes. Okay, this is... I need to send it to Dollar maybe. How do I change the cash money? Because it's in euros here. I should be the... Ho, lan ho, lan ho. What do you mean raid message? What raid message? What, wha- what's happening? There was no raid. I don't see any raids. What do you mean raid message? What do you mean raid message? What do, what the fuck? What are you saying, LD? But, yeah, I have, I have, I have one, but I keep forgetting to use it. Yeah, why do you, why do you say that? I mean, it goes with the song, yes. But, yeah, but do you want to know it? Oh, yes, yes. Actually, I'm going to write it down. Uh, hoppity, uh, boppity. Thank you for the mem- reminder. Hey, that's true. Uh, hoppity boppity time to raid that booty. There it is. Uh, I'm actually going to ready, write it down with both. Um... How do I, okay, I'm going to just... Uh, where do I put it? Uh, I don't know. Uh, hoppity boppity time to raid that booty. It disappeared. Um, so, ba 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 ba. Ah... That's a bit more. 600? Something! Something! Something. That's a message. That's a red message, because I don't know what to put as a passive here. Ah! Because I need to put the emojis. Uh, so... Hmm, I need to make it funny. Like that. Yeah, that's funny. Uh, ta 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 ta. So nearly end of my shift, what did I miss? Uh... I am going to pay... I am going to pay gentleman to edit my clips. And the mad lad said yes. For all of them. So... I guess it's my official editor now. So... And if he can actually do the clips at the rate, he said he's going to do the clips. That will be a lot of clips for half a year. So, yeah. Time for me to use metric tools to plan everything. On all platforms! The beef clip invasion begins! Oh yeah! Like the cream! It's 36.10, there's 120. Um... 12, yeah, but damask. Uh, 12, so it's 12 times 36. Times 36. 36 times 10. 36 at the end of it. Oh sorry, I'm trying to do the math and I'm bad at it. I will make, one day, I mean, you can do it right now! Or we can do it tomorrow. I mean, we can do it tomorrow if you want. We can do it before Badu Gate. It'll be quick. Most, both are most done. It's gonna be quick, also like if Jagi... If Jag and Dragon are there, then they can go through the entire stick. And then they're good! And then they're good! And everything is good! 36 times... Which is 120. Wait, how many do I have? Yeah, I have 120, right? Okay, we're both confused about math. We both, we both... We're confused. Dude, I love those, um, the chat stuff, because you can actually see through the stuff. You can see everything! The table of pages, your hoister! Yes! That was a bit, math is, it is. I know, I use it a lot. I think I can see, see everything. Uh, di- 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 what was I doing? I can't read. Should I start in the beginning, guppy? Guppy time? Little guppy time, I dunno, maybe? Actually, I need to do guppy time, I think I need to wa- I need to read tha- was I done with that? I kinda. I have one passive left. God damn it! Okay. A sliding devil, a gobblegape, gobblegrape. Actually, I think, yeah, sliding devil is really good to do. Okay, we're going to do business right now, so no one writes. It's going to be serious, serious chat right now. Serious chat! I mean, it is business, so, it'll be serious. Uh, brr 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 brr, because I'm strumming. Hold on a second, Ogi. Ogi. So I may have an Eldritch poppin', because, uh, yes, we have some business to do. Um... Because yes, I am a mad lad and I have money, so I'm going to splash my money. On my community, like an idiot. Instead, instead of editing myself, because I don't want to edit myself. So, what could be a good one for the, uh, dredging? Dredging makes sense, we are on the fish. I mean, they can breathe on the water, right? I think they can do both, right? Um, mudskipper. They can do both, right? Yeah, amphibious fish. If water affects it, but, yeah. If they thought. I guess I could ju- ju- to continue shows, I think. Uh... Like on his own server, or on my server? I dunno, whatever. Oh, hello!
Hey Beaver!
So, yeah.
Now I'm sorry, I'm accusing myself too at the same time, okay?
Your what?
Okay, I'm ki- okay. So, the way I do clips, it's, uh... It's, you can break it down to like 5 dollars a clip, depending on what you need, I... Assume... There'll be cutting, and I assume you want subtitles, or like text.
I mean, I want the entire stick I pay for.
Yeah. So at that part, I usually choose about 5 dollars just for the whole shebang. For each clip, so like I said, I usually break it down like 3 clips for 15. And so I can do the... Like, like, we can do, I can do like 10 clips a week.
Yeah.
And so that, we, 12 deliveries, at 120.
That's, when you're 120?
No, I'm saying, you're 120.
Okay, sorry. Oh my god, too much math!
Yeah, so what I'm saying too is additionally, each time I deliver, I got, I charge additional 3 dollars just to mitigate some of the losses I take in 5.
Yeah, because they get their commission, right?
Yeah. Now 3 dollars in the cutting, but it helps me kinda like, even out the numbers for me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, at 10 clips a week, 12 deliveries. Um, so it's 12 times 3, so at the end of it, it'd be additional 36 dollars on top of the edited clips.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. How much is that?
That's wrong, okay, so as for the total of everything, so let's see. Let's say 10 clips a week, just to make it easy on the math.
Just, just write it down, because I do, I don't want anyone to know much of, because I'm still streaming, by the way.
Oh, you got it.
I don't want, I, I don't want to know how much, how much money, I don't want people to know how much money I'm splashing on this. Let's see, guess, because imagine the bots, if I can know the money I can splash on shit. They're like, "Hey, back to where I'm an artist now!"
But I wanted you to kind of, what the extra 3 bucks is for, just, it's just, it's two dollars five. Okay. So then, here's what we'll do, I will run the numbers.
Yeah.
And I'll get back to you with a quote on everything.
Good.
Alright, sound good?
Sound great.
Yeah, if you ever, if you ever have any more questions about it, just let me know.
Yeah.
Alright, and I'll talk to you later Beaver.
Yeah, you too, have a goo- have a good day. Dude, what the fuck are my streams now? There's literally business meetings in the middle of my stream now! Ah, this shit is hilarious! There's literally business meetings in the middle of my streams! Ah, I love that shit! Okay, I, I think I'm done for today. Wikipedia, the community, it's all, it's, everything's business, do you know? We always sit around a very large round table, we talk about scringlies. And we count our scringlies. Uh, very important. Dakar bring many scringlies, so we need to count them all. It's part of the, the, the daily budget, I'm, I'm bullshitting, I don't know what I'm saying. I need to think about that, here, because I want to like, make that one finish, because it's pretty easy to finish that one. The thematic is already there. Sooooooo! You're definitely the... Hello, wel- welcome back, Madec! Oh my fucking god! I can't believe it just popped in, and we were like, "Yeah, business time, business time, have a good day!" That shit is insane! Okay, Ogi. Uh, I guess it's the end for today. Uh, because I, I want to buy some shit and I want to do... Hmm, should I go on foot? I should go on foot to be healthier tomorrow. I should do that, I should, I should, because I want to get some drinkers. Uh, because that week was also quite something, and I need to chill. But to do that, I need to make it worth it, so I think I need to like work, because, yeah, okay. Why I say to workout? Is because I live on the, on like a tall, like, like, um, a low level mountain, quote unquote, like a tall hill. Depending on you want to say it. It's technically a small mountain. And you have to go up and down every time to go to the supermarket. So it's like, um, 30 to 45 minutes of like 70% incline. Uh, so it's, that's why it's, it's, it's all down when you go there, and it's all up when you go there, like there is no way, like it's all down, all up, so that's why it's good for cardio. So I'm probably going to do it tomorrow. Uh, probably going to do that tomorrow, because I, I need to make the trip worth it, to motivate myself. And if I'm not motivated enough, then I don't, don't get any drinkers, if I let my laziness win. That's the way I do it, so that I motivate myself to workout. Uh, sometimes, uh, if you want to, yeah, you too, man. Uh, so here's a raid message! Eldritch, hey, I said it! I have the raid message! Thank you for reminding me. Um, this is raid message, I don't know who's we're going to raid, so I need to see who is raidable. Uh, today. Going to botable. So, we need to see who's botable. Um, who's, who's, who's J? Uh, well, that's pigeon, that's pigeon child, he's a great artist. Uh, I don't know who to raid. Blee! Blee! I don't know who to raid. Uh, I don't know who to raid. Uh, there's a new boy. There's new boy. I can raid new boy. Let's raid new boy. Let's raid that bitch. Okay, slash raider. Not a vampire, I'm not a vampire. I, I literally will go in the sun tomorrow. If I go get drinkers, because I need to make it, uh, worth it. Uh, create an... Create an Eldritch. Because, because Yabo may be interested in, in the tabletop RPG. So I shall raid the boy. And the boy shall be peered at! So, thank you for coming to the presentation, and here is the raid message. Here is the raid message for those who I think are subscribed. Uh, and, uh, here is the raid message for those who are not subscribed. Why, why should you not follow me? I don't understand, you should really do it. You know? You should, you should just follow, it's great. Um... Ah fuck, I forgot I would do that, because I was doing silly shit. Was doing silly shit, uh, oh, you see the message? Okay, nice. Uh... Follow forever! Uh, and in the darkness, bind them in the follows. Uh... Fuck, I'm flab- uh, yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah. Fuck, I got my squid wrong! Got my octopus wrong, damn it! Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah. And same, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And that's the unsubscribed raid message. Both raid messages are in, use them! Ah!